Your order, all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call please.
Professor Hill?
Here.
Professor Anderson?
Here.
Professor Yapi?
Here.
Professor Assling?
Here.
For the choir.
Here.
Thank you very much. Public comment, although it looks like mostly employees, but you're still public. If you have any comments on agenda items only, one through nine, we would hear those now, not your usual reports, but. All right, not seeing anybody jumping up to do that, we'll continue on to number one, building and zoning, Jason. Thanks for joining us this morning.
February twenty five, building zoning.
Six building permits this month, two of which were new modular homes.
So, because you speak up a little bit, is that on your mic on?
Two, okay.
You don't have to get right up to it.
Uh, so we issued six building permits in February, two of which were new modular homes.
Okay.
One electrical permit, three mechanical permits, uh, one new, uh, residential rental, registration and inspection, uh, one land use permit, somebody actually put a fence up in February. Uh, and that was a total of twenty five hundred and seventeen dollars.
Board members, I know that you, uh, you had this, had this ahead of time, anybody have any specific questions, uh, for Jason?
Are we in track with normal?
Um, it, it was a slow month, uh, and I actually was talking to Bruce Dean, our electrical inspector. And he does Aronak County, Otten Lake Building Agency and Lion Township, and he said it's been the slowest he's ever seen in his life.
Your expectations for the spring is?
Uh, you know, it's hard to say, um, I, I'm getting permits for new houses already, so, uh, you know, it, there's some talk that lumber prices are gonna go up. Possibly with the tariffs in Canada.
Yep.
Um, so we'll, I guess we'll see how that pans out, but, um, when I talk to the builders, they're all still real busy. But February is always the deadest month, so it's not too unusual to have a real slow February, but we'll see how the spring pans out.
Pretty much the country's uncertainty right now becomes ours.
Absolutely, yeah.
That accurate?
Yeah, we did have two, um, zoning board of appeals and those both passed, so that those will be two good jobs and there's, I think, a couple more, uh, variance requests in the works, so. Some actions out there, but we'll see come May, June, what, what's really cranking or not cranking.
Anybody else, word?
Very good, thank you, Jason.
Yeah, you bet.
Number two, uh, police department updates, Chief Maschinsky? Okay, very good.
Department of Police update on the heads.
Okay. Morning, John.
Good morning, everybody. Large yours. Oh, thank you, um, well, the SRO program, uh, at the Ross Commonary Public Schools is going very well. I think it's the essence of community policing, um, we have been there for two years now, a full two years, and we've, Officer Ryan Brennan before me and now myself, um, built a great rapport with the students and the parents and honestly, the whole community. We get a lot of really good feedback about us being at the schools and, um, I think it's been good for the kids, I know judging from complaints and things that we've seen at the schools, from when we started to now, um, complaints are way down this year, we don't have nearly as many as when we started. Issued a handful of tickets for kids vaping at the high school, but that's way down and we have way less problems than other schools. But it's, it's, it's been a great experience for me and I, for the kids as well. I built a good relationship with a lot of the high school kids and that heads off a lot of problems before they become problems. Uh, they all have my email address, several of them have my phone number, they use it often. Um, I get, you know, a lot of, a lot of social media action that, you know, kids commenting on things online and stuff and that's all handled with, you know, talking and I found that the SRO position is a lot more mentoring and parenting than it is police work. And, um, it's, it's, it's been a good mix, it's been a really good fit.
It's good you feel that way because early on in, there was, there was, um, I felt plenty of policing to do and I know that you guys have worked really hard on that. So to hear you say that's kind of rewarding because I, I felt like you could get there and achieve that to where, uh, you're, you're doing less of actual law enforcement policing and processing things in court and more of a preventative proactive approach.
Correct, which is, which has been, it's been great for the kids and, you know, it's, yeah, it, it's been very, very successful in that respect.
That's great news. What do they say, work yourself out of a job, right?
That's right, that's right.
I don't think that's, that's a never end.
Well, one, one of the good things about that is it frees me up to do a lot more with the school than I would be if I was, you know, tied down with other things, I do several presentations for the schools and all three buildings, I did love stranger danger for the preschoolers. I help with their, I, I do a section in tenth grade health class on drugs and alcohol. We have the NIMCA Center coming in April to give, um, exploitation and exploitation speech about social media and that, um, to our middle school and they'll be addressing the high school as well. But things that, at different times and we need to prepare the kids differently than we used to, so.
Are you, you seeing the decreasing in the sexting, which was a huge, uh, issue back a few years ago?
That has, and that has, that has come down a bunch, um, only dealt with that once at the school this year. That was, that was the only case with that and other than that, it's, yeah, it's, it's, there, there's been a lot more education about it and that's why we're bringing the NIMCA Center in to speak with them and the, uh, Michigan State Police will be helping us with that also. So, yep, and then we also, we have kind of fully cemented our BTAM process, which is Behavioral Threat Assessment Management for any sort of school threats and threats between students and things like that, we've had, I think, three okay to says that came into the school and we investigated all of those. Our BTAM process has expanded to I do home visits now if we feel that's necessary, if that's part of the action plan, just to make sure that things are, you know, safe at home and there's no access to anything harmful. But honestly, all the kids at the schools have been great, they've all been, I, they're, we got a good bunch of kids, we're kind of lucky.
Fantastic. John, what's BTAM stand for?
Uh, BTAM is Behavioral Threat Assessment Management and that's for kind of like a, it's our preventative measure to like an active violent situation.
I, it's a tool, yeah, that, that incorporates staff and anybody that might touch the.
That's correct, right, the staff, school counselors and.
Make sure, no, it's, uh, so you don't slip through the cracks.
Right, exactly, exactly, if, if there's any sorts of kids drawing pictures of things that are inappropriate for school, we set up an action plan, um, we address the child, we sit with the parents, talk with the parents, let them know what we're, what our action plan is to, you know, keep their child safe and everybody else safe.
For those of you don't know, okay to say is a state program, uh, in which the, the students can call that okay to say, uh, and, uh, and then it gets referred down through.
That's correct, it, it's an anonymous reporting site.
Anonymous piece and it gets referred down through so that it's handled at the local level, uh, to address whatever they may have concerned at the state level through that use of that line of okay to say, it's a nice, it's a great safety.
It is.
Probably, yeah, obviously, you know, from what we wrote the grant for initially a couple of years ago, that I know I was involved in, it's just so exciting to hear that we're actually getting what I call that proactive piece to it. Um, you know, everybody wants to, unfortunately, everybody wants to always, uh, look at, shall I say, the numbers, the volume of complaints coming in at the school, whatever, well, you know, you're successful. When that successfully starts declining and the proactivity time is allowed to pick up. And so I'm glad to hear that, I'm excited for that update. That being said, uh, for the board, uh, Chief Maschinsky obviously is gonna have to be dealing with, that contract with the school district comes up in twenty six.
Correct.
A three year and, uh, that has been bawling about, uh, at the state level about whether the state dollars would continue in those grants through the Department of Education and I think it's probably a game day decision, I'm guessing in twenty six, um, and so there, she, he's been having discussions with Superintendent Erickson about continuing that and how, you know, whether the school is going to be able to fund it at the level that it is now. Our commitment is twenty five percent of John's, uh, wages and pay and, and that type of thing, the school district picks up uh, twenty five and the state has been picking up fifty through that grant, so that becomes a local school board, uh, issue as well and I hope we don't lose this effort, uh, in any way, but more to follow, is that correct, Chief?
Yeah. You said through twenty six.
Well, February of twenty six, I believe.
So it starts in middle school here, then, that's when the.
No, if the, the grant started, I think it was February twenty six.
Yeah, it's February twenty second, I believe.
Yeah, twenty second.
Twenty six will be the end of the grant cycle.
Twenty twenty six.
Um, conversation I had with Superintendent was, we just finished a school year out with our SRO and we just responded normally like we normally did. That way, if we do go into contract with them for another year, if the school they were funded or the grants available again, we'll pick it up at the beginning of the spring, or not spring, fall, twenty twenty six, a school year in the beginning and then we'll be on a school year cycle. First, it's, because when we did the grant, the way it fell was, it just happened to be in February when we got the grants, so we started right away.
Yeah, they dropped that grant very late in the game and most of it had to do, if you recall, the major shooting in Oxford and the state legislators, um, you know, was a, a kind of an action reaction piece and so they released the money looking to through the Department of Education and grants, our school district jumped on board rather quickly on it. And so that's why it's kind of what I call out of cycle for the school year, so more to follow, obviously, and I.
You're good through the next three months of this year and then through the following full school year, you're, you're funded. Until February of the next school year. February, but you anticipate, you were saying you anticipate that somebody's gonna pick up the tab from February through June next year, too.
So, geez, anticipating that they're still gonna be able to do the, um, seventy five, twenty five, we can deal basically.
Good for, certainly, they see the value.
Sure, probably.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I see the value in myself as more like, after Ella said, you know, with the community, the students, the parents, the staff, I mean, they all love it. It's a big benefit for our department also, you know.
And like I said, it's, question is reactive or proactive and I think proactive is more fruitful, but in that tone or several years ago, I think there was, I think it was called boot program, or this, where they bought boots for the doors, they still use those? Or have them there, you know?
Boots for the kids?
Locked, uh, locked.
Yo, yeah, absolutely, yes, yes, yeah.
Case of a.
All the, all the doors at all three schools have boots on the classroom doors, they, they lock interior and we do those, we do lockdown drills, um, several times a year. Oh, yeah, absolutely, absolutely.
Necessary part of the overall security.
You start that with kindergartners, those drills.
Mm-hmm.
Any other board member have questions for, uh, John?
No, but I just want to say thank you, I, I think it's not only the programs, but it's the individuals behind it. I think it takes a very special person to be able to go into the schools and work with young people and it's not, it's not everyone who can do that, so thank you for
Thank you very much.
for being that person for us and it's very much appreciated.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you, John.
Thank you very much.
All right, good morning.
Good morning.
Uh, so I'll just start off with the number two there on my work session, uh, our twenty sixteen Ford, uh, police cruiser has been stripped of the decals and we had it detailed by, uh, B two detailing and, uh, created a flyer and put it on Facebook for, uh, uh, sealed bid, um, sealed bids. Uh, put a minimum bid of fifty nine hundred on it, um, that was just based off, uh, Craigslist, or not Craigslist, Kelly Blue Book, um, low, uh, retail sale of a vehicle of that year and of that many miles, um, so that's where I came up with the fifty nine hundred. Um, I've been in contact with, uh, the clerk's office and we agreed to, um, close the bidding on April second. So anybody that wants to put a bid in, we'll have to have it in by April second and then at the April third work session, um, she can open up and go from there and see, you know, what we have for bids and things on that. And then I have some flyers over on the table there too, um, if anybody's interested in taking one or whatever, but, um, we're trying to get the word out and get that vehicle gone and then I checked with, no, not yet, but we've only had it out there for about a week, so, and.
Suggestion is maybe putting it out also in the parking lot with the for sale signs on both sides, but we've done that in the past and I think that's generated some.
Yeah, yeah, we didn't do that the first week, we had talked about it, but with the snow and stuff, we didn't want to get in the way of the power trucks, but now that the weather's breaking, we'll probably do that. Um, so, uh, and then number four there, um, Officer Tererski, um, had a surgery and everything and his, his recovery period took a little bit longer than we anticipated. He believes that they maybe told him that it would heal faster than what it actually did, um, but, um, as of this report and as of Tuesday, he's gotten a note to come back for full duty and yesterday was his first day back. Um, full duty in uniform, taking calls and, um, he's super excited, he's, um, him and Rodney are working together, um, and they've seen to hit it off and get along really well and they're doing really good, so he's excited to be back.
Felt okay at the end of the day?
Oh, yeah, he, uh, he actually had a, uh, complaint that, um, had come into the office and, uh, it, he really took off and ran with it and it looks like it's, you know, it's gonna be some type of fraud complaint that, you know, he might get some charges out of it and, you know, some recovered property, so he's pretty excited about it, so, and we're, we're really glad to have him back, so. Um, but while he was off, he was doing, working on the court set of sides, um, he did about another eighty of them this month and, um, he assured me yesterday that he'll continue to kind of work on them when he has some downtime, um, he's said he's about two thirds of the way through of them. Um, once he gets through them and we just get the monthly ones, we're only getting, you know, anywhere from two to five, two to ten a month that you, we'll just be able to keep up with them at that time, just when they came out, we had a, a stack of them, you know.
For the board members that weren't here before, court set asides were something that came in shortly after April first of twenty twenty one, uh, law that passed that, uh, basically, um, sent, courts had to send, send us, um, their automatic set asides that were, uh, through the Supreme Court Administrator's Office based on the law to clean people's records essentially of misdemeanor charges and that type of thing and so the local courts were, had to generate and continue to generate, um, a, a list. Uh, we got an initial list of twelve hundred cases, uh, that had to go through, back into their records management system and had to reflect the data and the set aside dates for anything that's public, would be public record for FOIA in the future. Um, and, uh, so those are, those, those hit, hit us, uh, pretty hard, obviously, in the police departments, there are some departments that are larger than ours that you have to hire a section to get it done, but, uh, it's pretty tough for us, so.
Yeah, and, and part of the reason was they, they did that was because people were saying they're having a hard time getting jobs based off these misdemeanor records that they had, so that's why they, they call it the clean slate law, but, um, so he's gonna continue to work on them and it'll be a, a nice relief once we're caught up and just able to keep up with the monthly, but he's, he's been doing really good on that. Um, as I stated before, Officer Moss is still in the FTO phase, um, and he's working with our field training program through Virtual Academy, which is our training, uh, platform that we use, um, all his documents and daily observation tests are now in the cloud for archiving and are being used by Officer Moss for his FTO training, um, like I said, he's, he's fitting in really well and getting along with everybody and, you know, him and Zachary have seemed to hit it off, uh, pretty good, so we're excited to have him and I, I think he'll be good for us. Um, Officer Moss was also sworn in by Sheriff Stern to be, uh, deputized like everybody else, so that's, he's all set in that area. Uh, number nine there, um, I think everyone's already aware, but I had received a resignation letter from Andrew Taylor. Um, and his last day was February twenty first, twenty twenty five, um, he's accepted a position with Escoto County Sheriff's Department, um, I've attached a copy of the letter. Um, and then when we had received the resignation letter, we had already put it on the board's, um, February regular board meeting, that was held February eleventh and it was accepted by the board, so there's no other action required with that. Um, he also did provide me a formal letter indicating he wished to be paid out for his fifty two hours of vacation time, which we've been in contact with the clerk's office on that and that has been processed as well, um, separately, um, for the amount of, uh, one thousand four hundred and fifty dollars and twenty eight cents and then I've also attached a copy of that letter in the work session report as well for your records. Um, so with the resignation of, uh, Andrew Taylor, I'm looking for the board's approval to begin looking for replacement to fill the vacant position and, uh, for this to be put on the March monthly board meeting agenda. Um, and I'd just like to point out again that recruiting and retention continues to be the number one issue in public safety today, um, I don't think it's, it's a, a regional problem even at this time, but, um, so if we could get that put on the, um, agenda, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm just letting him write and get caught up there, but then, uh, number twelve there, um, with the resignation of, uh, Alex Cole in January, um, and the board's approval to fill that position, um, that was done at the February eleventh, uh, board meeting, um, I'm looking for the board to authorize the hiring of Dylan Shero as a sponsored cadet with Garris Township Police Department with an entry level salary and benefits as appropriate beginning August eleventh, twenty twenty five, which is the first day of the academy. He would have to go through the, uh, Kirtland Police Academy, um, and the same with, or as with Alex, when we had sponsored Alex through the academy, um, in twenty twenty three, Dylan would be our employee and when he graduates on December twelfth, twenty twenty five from the academy, he'll immediately begin an approximate three month field training program, uh, with our FTOs, um, he could then join a scheduled rotation for us somewhere around March sixteenth to twenty twenty six, um, obviously, it's a, a lot, quite a ways away, about a year out, but you know, that's the process that we have to go through to get somebody up and trained. So just a little bit about Dylan, he comes from the area growing up and living in St. Holland, born and raised and he actually comes from a law enforcement, first responder, um, background. And, uh, I've talked to Dylan and he's super excited, um, I think he'll fit in well with the department. Um, he's done some ride alongs with our department already and, uh, talking with him, he's, he plans on continuing to do some ride alongs throughout the summer, which would be great because it would just put him that much ahead, um, if he can do some ride alongs and kind of learn our procedures and the way we do things. So when he got out of the academy, it might shorten his FTO period a little bit. Um, but I think he'll be a great fit for, um, our team and, um, like I said, I'm just looking for the board's approval or I will be looking for the board approval for a conditional offer of employment for Dylan in the coming months, um, once, once he has been accepted and approved for the August academy. So at this time, I'm just looking for, um, to be put on the, um.
Looking for a motion to authorize a conditional offer of employment to Dylan Shero, uh, to sponsor him, uh, in the August eleventh, twenty twenty five ACC Academy.
Yes. Yes.
That cover it?
Yep.
The usual conditions to apply, obviously.
Yeah, and then after that meeting.
Backgrounds, uh, wrote us, uh, the rest.
Yeah, we, we started the background, um, we've got the packet of paperwork from the college and M. Coles, what needs to be fulfilled for that, there's a portion that he has to do and get accepted into the academy, uh, July first, there's a orientation for the academy that he'll have to attend.
Those will all be listed on the conditional?
Yeah, and then, um, after he gets his portion done, we can then, and accept it into the academy, we can then get him entered into Mitten and, um, the next portion there, um, we'll be applying for the twenty thousand dollar grant from M. Coles for the academy assistance program. Um, similar like we did with, uh, El, Alex Cole. Um, and if you remember, uh, this go around, they only, um, allowed ten million dollars versus thirty million dollars the first time. Um, the last update that I had gotten, there's about four point six million still left in that, um, funding. So we should be able to get that funding and then we'll put that towards his, uh, academy cost and wages and benefits while he's going through the academy.
So, um, procedurally, um, if you'll, if you're asking for the motion, uh, to authorize a conditional offer of employment to Dylan Shero at our next meeting and to sponsor and to offer sponsorship for him in the August eleventh, key twenty twenty five KCC Academy, will you get us the actual conditional offer of employment with the listed conditions?
Well, I was looking back, I was looking back when we sponsored Alex.
We did it separately.
We did it separately, we did, uh, the board's approval to sponsor him as a cadet in the academy and then once all the, I think, once all the requirements were met, we then came back just before the academy with the conditional offer of employment.
Okay, so how do you want to do this? The procedure now is been established previously.
Right.
Um, do you, what do you, what am I hearing, what do you want Tuesday night?
Well, I think we just, I think we just take out the conditional offer of employment and just the board's approval to sponsor him in the academy and then once all them conditions are met, I'll come back later for the board's approval for a conditional offer of employment, that's what I wanted to clarify, okay? Yes.
So then a motion to offer, uh, Dylan Shero a sponsorship um, in the August eleventh, twenty twenty five academy?
Yeah, so sponsored cadet with the Garris Township Police Department for the August eleventh, twenty twenty five academy.
Cadet status, okay. All right, I'll make sure that motion's written in that fashion and we will, we will then look forward to you after the fact of doing something conditionally.
Yes.
In a future board meeting.
Correct.
Um, either May, June, whatever, it needs to be prior to the August academy.
Yeah, it will, it'll be definitely be before, uh, start of the academy and we'll, we'll have that, um, offer written up and for you guys.
Uh, okay. Yeah. Just a question, if we sponsor him, is, he's still not obligated to take a job here. Well, he signed sponsorship, it's a state piece and so he has to go through sponsored by us.
Yes.
He has to.
Okay.
That's, he's, he's not, I mean, he gets through and he gets his accreditation, is he bound?
Well, I, I, I've seen, I've heard stories about that, so I, I'll just tell you a quick story, is actually when I went to, uh, the new chief's police executive school, uh, there was a department that had sponsored somebody through the academy. While that cadet was in the academy, he. While that cadet was in the academy, he saw this department over here and said, oh, the grass looks like it's greener over here. I'm gonna, I want to go with you guys. Well, he was already sponsored by this department. He got through the academy. After he graduated, that this department heard that he was gonna leave and go over here. They didn't activate his license, so he couldn't get a license activated to be a police officer. From this agency, so he couldn't go to that agency without having to go through the academy.
About, you know, right now it's pretty competitive out there, they're trying to snag officers, you lost one to, you know, to.
I'm cool with the licensing body is very attuned to these little games back and forth.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not, and I'm not even thinking that Dylan would be thinking that. I'm worried about some other department coming and saying, hey, you know.
Yeah.
Poaching, yeah, poaching your employer.
Yeah, exactly, poaching.
Yeah.
Is there any?
Well, like the supervisor said, it's M. Cole's state piece that they have to stay with us.
They're providing.
I just curious.
That 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 I think compounds it in a sense, I mean, they provided the money and if the guy goes, well, I like it better over here, they go, well, we pay for you to be a cop. And so they're not going to hold you to, you know, all the work that you put into getting them by come here.
Right.
Doesn't sound like that happens, that's pretty well.
No.
Pretty well.
Yeah, and and we do have an agreement that we drafted up when we put Alex through that. We'll have them sign and it's a actually a law that they put into effect. That if they leave within four years, they have to pay back this amount. Unfortunately, being that most of it is grant money. And and you can't go back um, and get wages and benefits because it's a federal piece. So you're really only looking at some uh, tuition costs and a little bit of equipment that we provided for him.
It's probably the state, isn't it?
Yeah.
That goes.
Well, the way the formula works out, the grant totally probably could have collected out of the the Alex who went through the similar fashion and then left for another department, it was about three hundred bucks. It costs you more money to fill the paperwork out there and does get.
Yeah, for for our department, I I looked into it.
Right, right.
Three hundred bucks you're exposed.
Right.
Right, so I mean, we'll have Dylan sign that paper also and explain it to him as well. But um, Dylan's, I think, super excited to, I mean, one, worked for Garris Township and he wants to be here. And I I think he'll be a really good fit. He he's met Rodney, uh, Rodney went through the academy with Dylan's brother, Ethan Shero, who works for the sheriff's department. So they've kind of already kind of hit it off and are talking and doing some things together and stuff, so I I think he'll be a really good fit.
Those the kids of the chief down there?
Yeah, Alan, yeah, yeah, it's both of Alan's uh, kids. So and and Dylan's been wanting, wanting to be a police officer ever since he was a little kid. And then Ethan's obviously older than him and he got out and got sponsored by Roscommon and became a deputy and an officer before. Dylan could, because Dylan's still in high school, he's graduating this year. So Dylan was a little not hurt or upset, but. Kind of frustrated that his brother became a police officer before he did because he's always wanted to do that, you know, but.
Yeah, and and for full, full disclosure to the board, I'll probably likely abstain on Tuesday. Alan Shero is my nephew, Ethan Shero is my great nephew and Dylan is a great nephew. Mine, so it comes from my law enforcement branch, if you will. But so uh, to avoid nepotism, I will be abstaining.
Yes.
Although I will share with the board that he is an outstanding young man. And out of the two that is of all my life, he has been the one that wanted. Nothing but law enforcement in his life and then his brother was going on a different path and then suddenly switched. Over to law enforcement, so. But so for full disclosure, that'll be what my abstention is about Tuesday.
Yeah. And related. And just for you, Jim, I mean, he's had opportunities to apply at other departments, he's only applied to our department, you know.
I'm not, and I'm not, you know.
No, I, I know.
You know, I know his family somewhat, uh, you know, I audited Richfield for years.
Yeah.
And I know his dad and I I I like the idea that. He's local, he's less likely to take off somewhere. I was just curious because I'm just worried about the term you use, poaching, not so much the individual would. Be out looking for another job, it's just that somebody else starts.
Well, and I'll I'll share this with you also, I mean, departments are poaching because like, you know, we'll go to these trainings and. You know, sometimes the speaker and instructor up there will be like, you know, the first thing they say is, well, just so everybody knows, our department's hiring, you know. For, you know, the crowd of fifty people.
You haven't any luck doing that?
No. No. But. Yeah, so.
By the way, surrounding counties and the like that are also doing signing bonuses now. This is a, it's just a nightmare.
Take home cars.
It's, it's a nightmare, the shortage caused from, you know, back four or five years ago.
Right, I'll take that noted for you there.
Oh, appreciate it. Um, and then like I said, once that gets approved on Tuesday, we'll get him going on the paperwork, he's uh, very punctual. He'll have it done, I'm sure, right away and back to us, so. Thank you. Uh, gonna move on to number thirteen there, um, so this last month I began researching and getting quotes to upgrade our in-car iPads with uh, mobile digital computer systems. Infrastructure technology uh, for the patrol cars. And this is to include computers, mounts, uh, license scanners, mobile printers, uh, software upgrade for that Lexus Nexus. And Lexus Nexus is what we use for um, our UD tens right now, our crash reports. They also have uh, e-citations available, which is basically electronic tickets. And then we can also use it for our RMS access, digital dailies and uh, search warrants, just to mention a few things. And then the reason being is that one of our department goals and objectives for the period of twenty twenty three to twenty twenty six is to continue to obtain practice and maintain. Maintain technology. As is always evolving, um, so with this new setup in the cars, officers will be able to scan a driver's license and it will auto populate into the e-citation, making it faster and easier to fill out a citation. It could take a traffic stop from ten to fifteen minutes and cut that time in half. Exposing less time for the officer to be exposed to, you know, a traffic accident or even the citizen that's pulled over. Is is one benefit. This will also streamline the process with the courts as the tickets will no longer have to be hand delivered. The courts are already set up uh, with the Michigan State Police to, with this program. If a ticket's written and it's automatically sent to the courts. This um, this will, uh, we won't have to worry about the seventy two hour window that we currently have to have citations into the courts. Because right now, if if a citation was wrote today, we have seventy two hours to get into court. And if if it's not there and the subject comes in to pay it, then it's basically dismissed. With this, it's automatically sent to the court, so we'll have to have less trips going into the court, taking uh, tickets and things in like that. Also, with the new car setup, officer will be able to start a UD ten accident report by scanning a license and it'll again auto populate into the correct fields. Making the process much faster versus manually typing everything in. Uh, other benefits of this in-car setup is that officers will be able to complete search warrants and print them off right in the car versus having to return to the office. Or find a computer and printer for search warrants or OWI blood search warrants um, while out on the road. Which could be a timely piece if it's an OWI, because sometimes you only have this a certain amount. Window there to get the most best results that you can get. And if you had to run around and find a computer, type it up and and do all that, you're wasting time and. So it's no other benefit there. Uh, officers will also be able to access RMS for digital dailies and search reports. They also will be able to access other area departments databases for investigative purposes. Uh, these are just a few of the highlights and then I'd like to also point out uh, in twenty twenty or twenty fourteen. Chief Hill at the time had applied for the risk reduction grant through the Michigan Township Participating Plan in attempt to do the same thing that AMC can do today. It's been eleven years since this project has been looked at again and I believe that the timing is uh, the right time right now to. Look at that and upgrade that technology piece. So with that being said, um, you know, we did an audit of our closing of our twenty four, twenty five budget. And uh, the audit shows additional carryover fund balance due to. Being one officer on short-term, long-term disability for most of the year with Zachary being out. Another factor contributes to the fund carryover is another officer that we had on workman's comp for two months. The retirement Sergeant Wybranic, retirement of Chief Hill. And then also. No, that's all right. And then not to mention, you know, the SRO piece where, you know, we had the grant and the school providing part of that funding for that officer. So with the fund carryover balance, I would ask that a majority of it be placed in the capital equipment line. So that we can fund this project and upgrade our technology in today's standards. And then I'll go into fourteen there too, and I think all of you are aware already, but. The Michigan Township Participating Plan Risk Reduction Grant, um, I've applied for or I'm applying for it for five thousand dollars to help out with the project. And I've provided everybody with the application and everything to kind of see what. I'm looking to get for the cars and things. So if if we want to go over that, um, and I would say it's on the agenda for the resolution, um, we're trying to meet a deadline of March fifteenth. We were able to get together and get the grant written um, quite quickly and and thanks to Supervisor Hill, he had some. Older documentation there that we're able to use and just beef up a little bit. So. So with that being said, I'm looking for the board's approval. To authorize the spending of up to twenty five thousand forty four dollars.
Come back here.
Well, um, I know that's actually um, item four, but would you want to entertain a motion to do that right now?
You're at. If you want to do the resolution piece first.
Well, we have to do the resolution to say it's okay if you apply for the five grand because that's what the power plan grant calls for.
Yeah.
The, as far as your, as your, your other piece, um, being able to spend your money. Um, what do you, when you, are you, so you, you, you intend to do this with or without the five thousand dollar grant?
That, that's correct.
Through, and of course, your justifications you gave uh, in here. And so are we looking to do that uh, Tuesday night or are we looking to do that in April or what, what's the? And I'm going to leave that up to your accountant, accounting here with treasurer, what? Because we have conflicts in terms with this treasurer. One is revenue in excess and the other is capital.
That's.
Continue to have that argument.
I hold your hand to the fire. So, yeah, that is a good question, it is the intent to make the order or to actually purchase that item. Those items before March thirty first.
Yeah, the the intent was to get the board, get it on the board agenda for the Tuesday meeting for approval to spend the money and purchase the equipment. And start outfitting the cars and getting it rolling.
But actually receive the products before March thirty first.
Correct.
So it would go in this year's budget.
Yes.
Okay. And I, I haven't gone back to look, but I'm, I'm quite sure based on my experience so far with uh. Your office manager that she made sure that the money was there before she asked. So I don't have, I don't have a problem with it.
And I mean, if if we have to wait till after March thirty first, I find because.
The only thing, the only reason I'm asking is if we need to accommodate the budget to to be able to to do this. That's why I'm asking, it's not a question of whether you need the items or whether we're going to prove them out, I suspect.
Well, yeah.
Just a question of, do we need to amend that budget before the end of the year?
No, like I said, when we did our audit, I mean, we're looking at, I think, a hundred and fifteen thousand carryover.
That brings me to the second issue, when you mentioned uh, some using that carryover and putting it in the capital. What I would recommend is that when we get to uh, let's say April, we've closed out March. Uh, if Julie or yourself put together and said. This is the dollar amount that we'd like to move from our general fund balance into the capital fund balance. You just come to us and we'll make that decision based on your, you know, recommendation. It's not, we don't, I wouldn't automatically just close out that fund balance and say, oh, I'm going to move this over. I'd rather have you just say, this is how much. And it really is, it's just a bookkeeping thing.
It's a transfer.
Yeah. It's not, it's not even a, it's just, because we were going to, we were talking about doing the exact same thing with the general fund. Reserving money for infrastructure and some other items down into the next year and I think once we close the year, we should as a board.
In reality, most, we're, we're, we're closing. My advice would be wait until April, after April, we do it in April, and the only reason why is is let's close the books out on March. You're usually, everybody has everything given by somewhere the, you know, March thirty first is the date, but it's usually March twenty something. Uh, where and then it gives these offices time to close those books out.
Okay.
It's still your money, it's.
Yeah, no. Yeah, and that.
Just, it's said differently out of the treasurer's office. Uh, and then at that point, in in April's meeting, you make that request and then we take care of it. Otherwise, it causes extra bookwork, obviously, here in the nth hours of the book.
But as far as.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Listen, I I I know full well exactly um, what's, where the that dollars are, most office manager very well.
Yeah, and and that's fine with me because, I mean, this is a a pretty big project and it's not going to be like done in a week, so. Um, even with some of the equipment that has to be ordered, we could be a month or two for it to come in, so.
So at our next work session in April, you will present that. We'll get you started with, right, and we're going to do that today on your resolution.
The resolution, yeah.
Because it has a timing date of March fifteenth.
Yep.
Uh, and I don't want to put you in three days beholding to the United States mail because it'll never get there.
Yeah, and so I I talked to uh, somebody from the uh, Michigan Township Participating Plan and they said, what will happen is they'll review. Everything at the end of um, April, the grant committee will review the applications and we should know sometime in May. If we receive that funding or not, so.
But with about the five thousand, you intend through your carry.
Yeah. Yes, that's still my plan to move, to move forward with it.
And I happen, I I happen to confirm, this is the perfect opportunity.
Yeah.
The perfect storm to picture department. You know, this is on the, I want everybody to know, this is on the backs of the folks over at the PD. Of picking up, you know, the extra shifts and the all the rest of that, they were budgeted for certain amounts for their officers and we've been short, short, short.
Yeah.
But now makes sense to do a what, what I call a one-off purchase. To do this, I wish I'd had that opportunity in twenty fourteen, to be honest.
Well, and like I said.
Might have been short.
This, this technology's been around for at least fifteen years, um, you know, where it's gotten. Really good, yeah, and and affordable. So I mean, we're that far behind technology.
Going to make you more efficient, so with less officers, you're going to be able to do more things.
Yeah.
Makes sense.
Make sure you're more attractive and.
Okay, so we'll, we'll then hold on that, that portion of it, Maz, we'll get you the other portion of number four yet today. Uh, so that you can continue a positive forward motion.
Yeah, I'll have to um, probably contact Jamie from ProCom and get a new quote because the quote that he gave me was only good for thirty days.
That's fine.
So I wouldn't anticipate that there's much change in the prices that he get, had given me. But at least I'll have an updated quote and then.
So it depends on where they're coming from.
Well, the good, the good news is, is when he talks about Jamie, that's ProCom, that's been the outfitter that we've used for a year for our and ours on our, our stuff. They have a lot of stocked items down there because they do this regularly when they do, we go replace and do new patrol cars for all over the state of Michigan. So I I suspect and I've, I've been down there physically and I know the type of inventory they have down there.
Yeah, so basically, the only thing he would have to order is the. Well, the computers could be in stock or they could be about a month out. And then the docking station um, would have to be ordered and that could take anywhere from a month or two. But everything else he has in stock. So it's just a matter if we have to wait on on those two pieces, but.
They already have partnerships with those print acts and all that.
Yeah, and then um, the Panasonic Toughbook is what he recommended. It's a, it's a nice computer and I've actually been in contact with Greenland City PD, they have the Panasonic Toughbook. They've had their Toughbooks since two thousand and.
Good to know.
Yeah, and they haven't had any problems with them other than, you know, maybe replacing some batteries, so it's a good product. And not to mention uh. They've been using theirs since twenty eleven. For basically what, what I'm asking to do today. So it, it's going to last a long time.
Okay.
But does anybody have any questions on the grand or the equipment or anything?
Looks good.
No.
Okay. So, um, and then the printers, they don't have ink cartridges. They're actually, um, thermal printers. So. That's just one less thing to worry about. But, um, so at the next work session, I'll just ask about the twenty-five thousand being put into the, um.
It'll be after the new budget year and it'd be much easier to handle internally.
Yeah. Okay. All right. Appreciate it. Thank you. Um, number seventeen there, uh, this month I was contacted by a resident, uh, Dave Sperry, who has a place at two oh six Magnolia Avenue. Uh, which is on the corner of Magnolia Avenue and Cardinal Avenue, um, over on the west side of the lake. Um, that's where they access Trader Island, basically. But, uh, uh, Mr. Speer is requesting the board to consider having no parking signs placed on Cardinal Avenue on the south side only. Um, there currently are no parking signs on Cardinal Avenue. Um, there are parking signs on Magnolia Avenue. Um, from the lake to the south to Allegon Drive on the west side of the road. Uh, Mr. Speer is requesting the signs as he is stating that the, in the summer months, subjects park on Cardinal Avenue and they're creating a sight vision obstruction. Which is causing a blind spot for people turning off of Cardinal Avenue onto Magnolia Avenue. Uh, he also believes that is a safety hazard for not only vehicle traffic, but also foot traffic and children on bikes and skateboards, et cetera. Uh, he also said they're blocking his driveway that he has on Cardinal Avenue that goes into his yard to his shed. Um, and then. Uh, and that they're parking too close to the intersection, too close to the stop sign. Uh, I've, I've talked to Mr. Speer. Um, and I, and I, other officers have actually talked to him also and advised him what we can do for him. Um, the piece for the site obstruction, if they're parking too close to the intersection or that stop sign. Um, we've advised him to call at that time and we can address it with some citations. And then if they're blocking his driveway, we can also do the same. I mean, it's similar to the situation we had on West Higgins Lake Drive and Town Line with a resident with people parking there and blocking his driveway. Um, it word spread fast. We issued a couple of citations and we now have no problems with that at all. Um, and as far as the, uh. You know, he's concerned for it to be safety. I mean, part of the reason we have public safety in the township is if an emergency happens, we can respond and handle it accordingly. Uh, there's not that much traffic down there. In the summertime, it is busy, but I believe if we put stop signs there, it's just going to push the traffic out further. From there. Um, and then also, you know, similar to last year, you know, with the people requesting the twenty-five mile an hour speed signs. If we do it there, they're going to want it over here and then over here. And then, you know, next thing you know, there's going to be no parking nowhere. So. My recommendation is that we can handle it with some enforcement action, um, on the PD side. And, and there's, uh, no need to move forward with no parking signs there.
Get the tools. You got the tools you need to, if you can enforce with the tools you got, that's going to fix it, you think.
Yeah, because, um, with the no parking law, you can't block a private driveway. So if they're. Parking in his driveway and blocking his access ingress and egress, um, we can issue a citation for that. And then, like I said. We had the similar situation on two hundred and Town Line. People were parking in front of his driveway and we started issuing some citations and. People started talking and I was like, oh, you can't park there because it's a driveway. So, and then same thing with the intersection. If they're pulled up too close to the stop sign or the intersection, they can't park within a certain amount of distance of, of that stuff.
It's common sense.
Well, there's short-term rentals in through there. He was saying to me that there's short-term rentals and that's a lot of the problem.
Well.
And it's summertime when it, it, that's when it's happening.
It is, is the previous chief that got all of our ordinance parking, um, codified through the state in the seventh district. Um, I, I clearly was told by the seventh district and it was through MSP that, you know, this. Garris Township, these are, you're not going to get any more no parking stuff to push something away from someone's driveway or further down over the, these basically the road access.
Mm-hmm.
And that has to come from them ultimately through traffic control order. It would go from us to the road commission. Road commission would go out and do a study, if you will. And then it would push it, you know, uh, then to the, if, if they need it, they then would recommend that's. Uh, through their board as well to have the seventh district traffic services division, uh, come and look at it and give their thought process or they will or won't. Ultimately, the, in this case, like in many spots throughout the township, there is state statute, not township statutes or ordinances.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that we would have to spend the money on. You can do it through the state and the prosecutor.
So it's not us, it's not just like we decided today, no, we wanted to put them up. We don't have that ability. You don't have the authority.
Yeah, we, you'll have to go through the road commission. It's a process.
So, and your recommendation is that you think that you can enforce the, the no parking too close to the stop sign and in front of driveways. It'll solve the problem anyways.
Yes.
That's what you, you recommend.
Yeah.
But. Needs to call when it's happening.
Yeah. And, and as far as the other parking that, where they can legally park. I mean, I, I really don't think there's no better place for them to pull off and park if they're using. You know, Magnolia Road End for the access to the island or friend's house or whatever it might be.
Well, when you look at Cardinal, it's not super duper wide and I'm not sure you could even park, uh, uh. It would impede traffic by statute.
Yeah.
Uh, with a full car parked there, which is another state statute. The key to it is this communication and he needs to call when this is occurring.
Right. And.
And we need to put it into the patrols and that, and that kind of thing. Um, to clarify for you gents, the, the. By policy, the Roscommon County Road Commission has always punted this back and said, if you. Instead of answering their customer directly, because it's their road, they punted it back to the townships and said. If you can get township to buy on and recommend that we look at this, um, it, it's been very discouraging getting with that. I kept to concur with, with the chief. I think you, I think we need to try all the state statutes and those types of things. First before, but I will tell you that I'm confident it's an uphill, uh, battle to get anything like that. And I, um, you know, obviously short-term rentals have become, uh, somewhat of an issue in extraneous pieces. Which the board has already got the planning commission looking at. And some of that I think you can also address in, even in that.
Well, yeah, the parking piece.
Providing off street parking and things like that. So I think it's a, you know, I, although I'm sympathetic, uh, I know that on ninety-five degree weekends from policing this community forever. It's miserable and because everything is tight together, roads weren't managed or weren't plotted to be wide enough for the population that visits and. But quite simply, put the road commission puts that back upon us and, and says, okay, you be the, essentially you be the bad guy, if you know what I mean. Uh, in the issue. And so, um, I, I'm willing to accept your recommendation to give the police department an opportunity to try and mitigate this. Prior to moving things forward in a, in any type of other legislative process.
Yeah. And, and when I talked to him, I explained the process, um, that it wasn't just as simple as this. Um, and he, he's called. Multiple times from now that I found out, um, because he even talked to, um, the officers next door who explained the law and stuff to him and. Um, you know, his biggest concern is on, you know, the holiday weekends. Well, we know what it's like around here on the holiday weekends and it's, it's tough for us to. Get to them spots sometimes. So, um, I'll follow up with him and let him know the decision and that he needs to call when that stuff is occurring and, and we should be able to. Um, get it taken care of, I think.
With the policy there, the process would be if you came here and said, there's a problem and you need to do something about it. We would have to recommend, recommend to the.
Row, row commission. Yep.
They would have to come out and do what they have to do.
Yeah.
And they would in turn have to go to the state police. That is correct. And.
Well.
And eventually come back to, um.
And then the commissioners have to vote on it.
Yeah. Ultimately, when those orders are filed, then it has to be on file with the district court, uh, of record in Roscommon. It's a lengthy process. We try to. It's our traffic services out here every day of the week.
Eventually it comes law and that's correct. Something you can enforce.
Right.
Yeah, it takes.
Under the same, shall I say, because I codified all those through the state of Michigan, through the same state of Michigan. My goal when, when we did codification was. We were bearing all the costs of the township enforcement of a township TCO'd no parking sign. And incorrectly needed to be pushed back through the state so that any police officer anywhere in any colored car. Can write a ticket on that. That is not just a Garris Township responsibility. Roscommon County can do it. The Michigan State Police could write tickets on it. As well, as other statutes are available for everybody to do.
Right.
Um, and so that was the goal all along was to get, you know, if the, if a patrol car is coming by, I don't care what color it is, and there's somebody in the no parking zone. For God's sakes, get out and do your job.
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and do that. Not just, but previously it was totally on the onus of the Garris Township Police Department because they were township codified. Uh, things years ago, under an old statute that said you could do that.
Mm-hmm. And, uh, also at, um, our staff meeting in April, this is when we started going over, you know, summertime issues and things. I'll bring this up as a hotspot for officers to try to get down there and regular patrol. Um, you know, we usually talk about Kelly Beach, PA fifty-six, riparian rights, you know, that sort of stuff. So we'll also bring it up at that, to there. But I'll, I'll follow up with him and then let you know his response, uh, next month. Uh, I just got a few more things. Uh, this month I met with, uh, the cert team coordinators and we discussed and planned the schedule for the cert training. Quarterly trainings this year. Um, we'll be doing CPR AD first aid training, which is, uh, actually this week. And it's actually been combined into one class. So they'll all get certified on all three of those things at once. Um, but they had to attend both classes in order that, for that to do that. Um, and then we'll be doing, uh, mass casualty triage training. Uh, evacuation training and, uh, volunteer reception center training. Um, I think in October, that one's planned. But, um, so we got that all scheduled for the year. Um. And then I also like to point out this month, uh, administrative clerk Julie Hill was asked to participate in a administrative assistant clerk focus group. To discuss what law enforcement administrative assistant clerks do. Um, the purpose of the discussion was for the upcoming administrative assistant conference in April. That she's attending. And, uh, it was for the presenter to get a better idea. An understanding of what administrative assistants do so that they could present and address the group better at that conference. Um, and the reason I want to point that out is she's just one of five administrative clerks that was asked to participate in that, um, through MACP. Um, and it's, I think it's a pretty good, uh, honor to be asked to do that. And, uh, you know, she does a great job. So. I just want to point that out. And then, uh, as we kind of talked about earlier, February twenty-second, twenty twenty-five was the second year for the SRO position. Um, I did the, uh, second year study for the, uh, school board and provided them with them stats. Uh, we did meet our allotted, uh, fifteen hundred and sixty hours that's required by the contract for that. Um, and as you heard from John, you know, it continues to be great. And I plan on meeting with the superintendent and trying to iron out and figure out. Where we are at moving forward with it. Um, and obviously a part of that's going to kind of determine how we are staff, you know, because if. If we remain down, you know, a couple, I, I'm not sure if we'll be able to pull it off, but I think if, once we get Dylan up and running and full staff. That way, um, even if we're down one, I think we'll, we'll still be able to do it because we did it the last year with Zachary being off, you know, being sick. So. Um, and I see the great value in it, you know, as the police department and the community and parents and students and teachers, they love it. So. Um, even if we have to do it, being a short one, I, I think it's still worth it. So. Um, and then in closing there, I was able to get my annual report done and, uh, provided you all with a copy of that. I have some copies on the table over there, um, for anybody that would like it. And then you can take them copies and put them on the desk out there if you want.
Have some available for the regular Tuesday meeting on the eleventh.
Okay.
On the table.
Yep, I will. Um, that's all I have. I just, one, one other quick thing I'd just like to say, um, you know, coming up on my first year as chief. Um, and again, I want to thank the board's support and the community and the officers and staff next door. Um, we've had some ups and downs. Um, the first year, but overall I think it went well and, you know, I hope, hope you all see the same, but. Um, I know you guys only been here for a couple of months, but appreciate working with everybody.
Yeah. I was looking at stuff and I'm like, ah, it has been a year.
Yeah.
Was fast.
Yeah.
So.
Thank you, chief.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Good job.
Thank you, Chief Gilliam.
Now you're talking.
Only for this meeting.
Sorry, I was a little lengthy, but.
Talking my.
That's right. What's going on, Muz? That's positive. So.
Welcome, Christie. Morning.
Chief. Or yours.
Okay. So you guys all have a copy of the board report. I'm not going to read it word for word. Um, I do want to point out that we had forty-five calls of service this month.
Speak up.
Um, our average for the last five years has been thirty-seven. So we're a little above average. Um, so far year to date, uh, we're eighty-three. That's doing pretty good. We have had four fire calls this year. Two of them were mutually for structure fires outside of our area. One was for Lake Township, which was a pretty big structure fire. I'm sure everybody's heard about that, the castle. Um, and then another one for Marky Township. Um, both of those again were extremely cold nights and, uh, we had crews out there and. They did a great job and we have no trucks that, uh, broke down. We had nothing that needed repair. So I'm pretty happy about that. Um, we've had eighty-four hours of classroom practical trainings, um, because of our Thursday night trainings. They went really well this month. Um, we put our new rescue struts in service. Um, I know when Chief Fisher was here, he mentioned that we had a donation from, uh. Wes Elders' family and we got those put on the trucks. Um, they were reviewed last month and they're actually really nice. Um, they're easy to use. A lot easier. They had, you have real pins in them. Now they actually have cranks. Um, so they're a lot easier, quicker to set up. A lot more lightweight too. Um, as far as personnel provided training, we've done car seat installations again this month with two. And we've done more CPR classes for the core students and the health class at the high school. Um, Chief Fisher. Did his food distribution and his rotary meetings. Um, he also did the, uh, last annual report that he's going to do this year. Um, we did smoke, one on smoke alarm this year, so not many of those. Uh, committee meetings, we've done a lot. Um, one of the things that stands out to me is that, uh, Chief Fisher and myself, Donnie Burkett, who is our training coordinator. Sat through a, um, virtual reality training. This is kind of like the upcoming trainings that EMS survivors are using. Is virtual reality for trainings is more, I guess. Better than using the mannequins and saying, I'm going to listen to lung sounds and I'm going to give medications. You have to. Literally put a stethoscope in your ears and you have to put it up the mannequin and you have to listen to the lung sounds. And if you're going to push medications, you have to pick the vial, write medication, draw it up. And then put it in the IV like it's pretty significant. Um, just something we're actually looking at. It's not anything we're in the process of doing anytime soon, but it was. Kind of neat to see the way things are going. Um, Chief Rogers coordinated and attended practicals for the firefighter one and two class here at our department. Um, he was there along with a couple of other age or other department members. And we also had people from other agencies that came over and helped with those practicals. That was really nice to see. Um, we have a really good fire one and two class this year. So I think this is, it's going to be a good one. Um, he's also continuing to work with. Um, Phoenix Safety Outfitters for our new uniform shirts that we're getting. Um, they're not in yet, but they will be and you'll see them. We were using an other company before they went out of, uh, they went out of service. They basically don't exist anymore. So we don't have any work for uniform shirts. So we're going to try Phoenix. They do our dress uniforms as well. So see how they do. Um, our department members, we planned a surprise retirement party for Chief Fisher. Um, it went really well. I think. We pulled money together from our department members, uh, to help donate to the Wildland Firefighters Foundation in honor of Chief Fisher. Um, we had an honor brick placed at the Wildland Firefighters Foundation for him. Uh, it was a great turnout. We had a lot of great people and, uh, he was surprised. He had no idea until we were getting ready to walk down here. Uh, so that went over really well. So thank you guys all for that. Attended to that. So significant events, uh, with Chief Fisher retiring. First, I'd like to thank him for his dedication, his service, his leadership. Um, I wouldn't be here right now if it wasn't for him. I appreciate everything he's done for me personally. Um, we have posted for our full-time. Um, we have posted for our full-time firefighter paramedic position. Uh, the deadline was February twenty-sixth. We do have two candidates. I'm going to work this month on getting an interview committee together so we can get that in place. Um, upcoming, we interview and then our trainings for this month. We have a staff meeting coming up Thursday. We're going to talk about lockout, tagout methods to make sure that if we're doing something and something has to be taken out of service, we know what's going on. It's also our family night. Um, so we're going to have our families here. Um, this is going to be my first staff meeting. As the chiefs, I'm hoping we have a pretty good turnout. So I can start talking to staff. Um, other than that, our other, uh, trainings, we have advanced fire operations. Uh, trauma crush injuries and extrication, uh, advanced hose nozzles. Operations. So these are some new things that we haven't really worked on that we're going to try to make some improvements on this month. So if anyone's interested and you want to come watch it, more than welcome to. Other than that, that's pretty much it for me so far.
Great. Jim, I mean, morale the horn here. Anybody have anything for?
I got, I, did anybody catch the nine and ten news this morning?
No, try not to watch.
No.
Well, I, and I only thought of this when Christie was talking is that, uh. They did a, a segment on women in traditional men's jobs.
Yeah.
And firefighting was one of them. And they have interviewed two ladies that are in Clare County. It did a, you know, it's worthy of watching, but you just kind of made me think of that, you know. You, when I watched that, I was thinking of you.
Yeah.
But it also, uh, the thought of, you know, when you're out looking for additional firemen. Maybe there might be some ladies that might be interested in that. You know, all they got to do is meet the physical requirements to, to do it.
Yep, we're looking recruitment and retention, something that I'm really going to work on. Um, we have a couple applicants for part-time EMTs. We just. We need fire as well. And that's where we're struggling is trying to find fire and EMS combined. So that's where we're trying to figure out how to incorporate that a little bit better.
But you might find some recruits out of some young people coming out of school that are.
Yep.
Still living around here.
Yeah, we're trying. So we're in the CT program now. We're there pretty much regularly, almost weekly. And we're not finding people that are really interested in this. We have some law enforcement, but majority is military or. Uh, Coast Guard or investigating. They just don't want this. I'm not really sure why. I swear to try to change that.
Yeah. All I got.
You wonder why.
Anybody else on this side?
Oh, thanks. That was great.
Yeah. First week's kind of been interesting.
Yeah.
I have, I have two things. Uh, one of them is, um, been kind of looking around at the infrastructure around here. It seems like our buildings here are void of smoke alarms.
Oh.
Here in our own very building in which you folks I know installed. Smoke alarms. Can you maybe spirit that along? I know we have an oxide detector, but we don't have. Smoke alarms, uh, because this building is so old.
Yep.
Um, any, any way you can help us out with that?
Yes, we can definitely do that.
You know, and, uh, I read the, the emails this morning, the MTA is offering to pay for free. For water detection. I'm wondering if they also would do the smoke alarms.
Well, these are.
Not empty, I'm sorry, our, our insurance, maybe it is.
They're doing the water things. Yes, the.
Yeah, I'm sorry. It wasn't TA, it was the water.
What?
They're all paid for if you want something for, you know, in case of water leaks or whatever.
Yeah.
Uh, they'll, they said they'll pay.
Yeah.
And I'm just wondering would they do the same thing with smoke alarms?
Yeah.
Well, you guys get paid.
We have a program through the state of Michigan that they, we, they would give our residents, our township residents, smoke detectors and smoke alarms. We just have to enter them in a database, but they're free for our residents. So it should be free for our township hall as well.
Hardwired ones?
Um, we don't use hardwired ones. We put regular ones in.
Showing. Um, anyways, could you, uh, maybe just kind of, uh, you know, obviously you, you don't have to come back to us to recommend where you're the, you're the expert. Uh, so. But I'd like to see some smoke alarms going up for the protection of our employees here.
Absolutely.
There, here, I don't know, but. Secondly is, uh, folks, we have to talk about, uh, we have one funded position, uh, for Rotary. It's that three deep you can give to it. Jim Fisher, uh, graciously was our Rotary representative. And then we had some backups. And so, um, I, you know. I don't know who's interested in, uh, getting on the Rotary on our township's behalf. Jim was, has been active. And, um, and so I.
You've been the, the Garris Township that has got a corporate membership, which means that it's not. An individual like I've been a Rotarian for thirty-five years that year.
On your own.
And on my own as a, as a professional.
Right.
The, uh. Garris has had, is listed as corporate, which means, yeah, for the, it's sixty-five hours a month, but it means that two people representing. Uh, Garris Township could alternate or both go. You know, to the Thursday meetings and of course, all the other functions that we have and you're all always. Uh, welcome to those. Um, you know, my thought would be, obviously if you're able and willing is to fulfill what Jim was doing, but. Maybe Brandon would, would like to, uh, be the co-representative or. The supervisor.
No, no. Well, then. No, no, I'm not having marital trouble already.
But yeah, I, I don't need anymore. I would, you know, I think it's great, you know, Jim, Jim really got his name out there and Garris Township. By being part of that club, it's not just, you know, going to have lunches. We have a program every, today at noon, we all have a program. And we do a lot of community events, which a lot of them coincide with what. The fire department, police department do. The Rotary's. Been very active like in the act now and.
Every, every Thursday?
Every Thursday. Maybe you'd be interested in being one of those people. It doesn't, you have to have two official. Um, listed on there, but, uh, while worth it, uh, it's a great organization.
Chiefs, you're in your infancy. Um, I can't think of a better way to get known in the community. Than, uh, maybe.
Chief.
Part of Chief and the police. Let the chiefs, uh, you, you guys can argue out who might be the primary, but we need to be represented at the, uh, represented at the Rotary. I was on it a long time ago until my township board and towns, uh, township board didn't see the community connections. So they. They, uh, told me I couldn't go anymore. That's the history and I, I'm pretty sure this board feels exactly us. Um, that, that's part of a community involvement. It's vital. It's integral. We're going to break for bathroom anyway. So next. So you guys want to, it doesn't require us to physically appoint anybody. It's something that's been being done. It's just a representative.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, as a board. Uh, we need to make a commitment that we're going to.
Absolutely.
Support those dues and the, whoever it is.
Well, we have been, uh, so it's already there. It's just a change of whoever's going. Okay, that's why I don't think you need any actual board motion to say, we're going to do it. We're, we've been doing it.
Okay.
It was done by.
Well, it's good to know because.
Done a long time.
I'm also the guy that does the billings.
Perfect.
And I, I am slated to be the president again starting, uh, July of twenty-sixth.
Will you guys get to our treasurer then and decide who's primary and who is secondary? Um, and, uh, as a, I can also tell you, there's a secondary is the police chief. I always got delegated. The ticket pieces when they're to be sold. So I always sold tickets for Chief Fisher, uh, that was a primary. Uh, so it does involve some of that where you're, you know, looking to go out and get these, you know, these raffles and these things that, that fund the Rotary projects that are.
And there's, and there's nothing that says that if. You, you could even have a third person. So, so, you know, Christie can't make a new one to come. Or you, you know.
Just need to be represented.
You could both come, if the meals included, if two people show up, they got to pay for the second meal because the dues covers the first meal. So, uh, there's always one meal covered. Whoever shows up on Thursday, it's just if you both come technically, you're supposed to pay the second meal. But if you, if you had a third person, it's not going to hurt. It's always going to say, hey, you can't be here. Always be welcoming.
You paid the treasurer at the door. Well, I should say at the table when you get in there.
Fred Walsh.
Yep, Fred, Fred will remind you. Very boisterous. So you guys want to sort that out and get with, uh, Jim?
Yeah.
That'll, that'll work. Um, let's take a, uh, brief recess at ten, uh, nineteen for a bathroom break and we'll come back and resume the agenda. Thanks. There's nobody out there, but. Uh, MCDS infrastructure technology for patrol units. Whereas the Garris Township Police Department is seeking a grant contribution of five thousand dollars now. Therefore, be it resolved, the Garris Township Board supports submittal of an application to the Michigan Township Participating Plan. For a five thousand dollar grant to assist in funding mobile digital computer systems, infrastructure technology for patrol units. Is there anybody there here willing to make that motion?
Some of.
Uh, moved by Treasurer Anderson, supported by.
I'll support that.
Supported by, uh, trustee Appi. Uh, is there any further discussion? Here and none. All those in favor. Right, let's go roll call, roll call, ball please.
Treasurer Anderson?
Yes.
Steve Asling?
Yes.
With the Appi?
Yes.
Squires?
Yes.
Supervisor Hill.
Uh, yes, that is five yays and no nays and, uh, the motion, um. Uh, declare the motion adopted. Thank you. Chief, you have your, she can provide you with the signed stuff so that you can continue forward. Yep. Yep. All right. Sounds good.
Have to type it out.
Number five, uh, just a, a quick update on the Parks and Recreation, uh, applicants, um. Michelle, um, where, where are we at, uh, with those applications? I mean.
Jim has my folder.
Do you, for Parks and Recs? No.
Yeah, Jim has my folder.
Oh, you got them all in one folder. I'm sorry. Oh. I just want to keep the.
Contradict.
Uh, just, I just, just a very brief one, not, not to belabor the point. We're obviously reforming it. For several discussions and, uh, so we have, um, applications. I reached out, uh, not only on email.
Mary Ellen.
Nope, slow down.
Susan, Mary Ellen and Dan Simon.
Oh, good. Do I need to do one?
That's it.
Yes, you do.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't know.
Is the C max there yet? She said she was submitting it. It was there.
I'm going to say it one more time.
You're going to say it nicely one more time. That's what you mean.
Susan C. Matt, Mary Ellen O'Keefe. And Daniel Simon. Just those three.
I would get mine today.
Simon. Okay, I had sent emails to them and I also reached out by telephone. Done our due diligence as much as we can.
Well, if we don't have it. Still. And as the year progresses, we have, as we just add them.
Yep, precisely. It's, uh, obviously the goal is to get to seven people, uh, with one, uh, ex-official, which winds up being Mary Jo. From, from us, she's on the current committee. And so we're looking for three others. All right, uh, number six, if nobody has any more questions on that, the Health of Higgins Lake update, Jim?
Hey, uh. Really want to take as long as this one look like, but, um. Some stuff has been going on, questions on some maybe and then others just, you know, just informational. Uh, I met with the, uh, Health Department with Steve King and Mark Jarski a couple of weeks ago and talked about, uh, how we might. Uh, lean on them with, or to, to use their information to help us. Understand better what's going on in the township. This is, it could be a big piece of what we're using to bring together the, the Health of Higgins Lake project. Um. They're very much on board with what we want to do. You know, they've got some. Some rules and restrictions and stuff that we're going to be able to, they're going to have to work through with regard to how this information becomes available to us. But, uh, they have. They have a. They've collected. Information. For decades and it's gone in file cabinets and those file cabinets are, the records are still all there. This is regard to septic tanks and well logs and. Um, other property information. So this, the, the. File cabinets have the information that's now been digitized and put onto a server. And they have staff now that is taking that information and putting it into their fetch GIS system. And that fetch GIS is a geo, um, geo-located. Database where you can look at a map of the township and see that these properties have. Uh, current, that have information about those properties. You can click that dot, drill a little bit further to see what's, what's there. It'll also show you where we don't have any information and that's the part that we want to get to, to, um. Be assertive to, to the point of. Making sure that we gather this information and it ends up with the health department and it ends up in their database. And then we have good record of what's, well, what that septic tank is, the age of it, uh, the condition that it's in. And, um, and so that's the part that we want to get our arms around and we'll use that for, you know, other pieces as we move forward. So that's, that's in the works. They're doing Lion Township right now. Uh, they have some volunteers that are. That are going in and taking that information, getting it into the database. And then as soon as that's work's done in Lion, they're going to move over to, uh. To Garris and start with, uh, updating that. It's probably going to be, I, I, I don't think they really know for sure. It just depends on how fast, but maybe. Mid to late summer, by the time that's all that information is gathered together. With that, that would move into a septic ordinance with the next one here. And. That's this piece that I. That I have, uh, that you can read through the next couple of pages there that, um. I'd like to see us consider. Writing an ordinance or a directive or, uh, some document that. That explains to the public, the information, the importance of us getting this information as a public health initiative. To find out where the, what septics are good, what septics are bad, or not bad so much, but what septic's information is not available. And then getting a direct mailer to, up to the citizens to explain that to them. And try to get them to voluntarily, that's the, you know, at first anyway, to go through and have these inspections done. Have their septic inspected and then, uh, get it updated on the. On the health department's database. Has to be the health department spec, otherwise it doesn't do anybody any good. So, um. That's what Lion did to, in their septic inspection, but they, they also mandated that it was going to have to be, if your septic failed, for example. You were going to, it was feared you were going to have to put in, uh, twenty-five thousand dollar new septic system. They never did any of those and, um, and then the septic ordinance was rescinded before they really got a chance to. Get much done, but they did get six or seven hundred septic inspections out of it. And with that, they found some, you know, some pretty important stuff. So. Somewhere in the middle is what I'd like to see us do, um. To, uh. The, to get this septic ordinance in place that would, um, allow us to first go across the northern part of the township, for example. And identify these in, in this fetch GIS system, identify the properties that don't have. The information and get a mailer off to them. Um, and explain to them that, uh, you know, this needs to be done. And here's the list of inspectors that are out there and. You know, make arrangements to get this app.
Jim?
Right? Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Um. The ordinance that's currently being worked on, I think, because we don't have one, right?
Right, right. Yeah.
So this one that you got here is something that Tom Barber gave you, but it's not.
No, what this is, is what I put to you. I talked to Tom about this. I have Tom's, Tom has sent me the stuff that. The data that he's kind of collected, a half a dozen.
Cause I'm on the planning commission, but I've only really been to one meeting, but.
No, this is not something you've seen. It's something that.
Okay.
I'm going to send with your buy-in. If I'm on it, if I'm on the right track here. Um, I'm going to send this to Tom and have him use some of this as the framework for moving forward with your septic ordinance.
Okay, because we're meeting next Thursday night.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I guess what I, I guess I was leading to is that an ordinance that the township would put out would be. Township Y.
A township wide, right?
Yes.
And uh, but I'm wondering. If there should be some higher standards within so many feet of, of the lake. And I don't know if that's contemplated. Or is that something that the planning commission would, is supposed to contemplate? Or is that something that's gonna be through the Health Department? Or maybe it's not even being considered?
Um. Right now, I, I think that's open for discussion in my mind, but the first step would be this investigative piece to find out where we have information and where we don't. And get these septics inspected. And then followed right along behind that is the ordinance that says. That you need to come up to some level and that's at a state level, that's kind of a minimum. The state specs are pretty minimum and they're probably not as high as we'd like to see them. So this ordinance that we might put together may have ratchet that up a little bit and says that within, pick a number, five hundred feet of the lake, you need to have. You know, different criteria or additional criteria or whatever. Um, that's stuff that's gonna have to be open for a little bit of, you know, further discussion, I believe.
Typically ordinance pieces like this would come through the commission. And uh, ultimately we'd have to have public hearings anyways on them, but typically it comes through the planning commission. Comes to the board and then the board can look at it and if they have comments, they send it back to the planning commission.
Well, I, I'm just looking for direction as far as should we be looking? At at least a two-tiered ordinance or should. We just be looking at an ordinance because they're gonna look to me and say, well, what's your board saying? And maybe it's too early for that, maybe, but I know, I think they've been working on a septic ordinance and. And uh, you know, of course, that might've been, when that was started, that might've been with the assumption there was a sewer going in around lakes, so that didn't matter, but.
I can't, I can't comment on it. I've not seen the work yet. I've seen it in the minutes listed that they had. Working, but I have, nothing's come to the board table yet.
Right, but I, I know it's gonna be discussed soon.
Yeah, well, I, I, I get that. My personal opinion on the uh, on, on the pieces is that look. Um, I, I. Those people are tasked with coming up with thoughts and processes regarding an ordinance. And I, I, if they feel like it needs to be two-tiered, fine, uh, put that forward. Um. As a board member, I, I'm not gonna direct anybody to do anything. I wanna look at the work. We'll talk it over as a board and I'm not interested in one or two board members um, leading the, the, the charge, if you will. I just know we need a septic ordinance. I've not been, I'll publicly make the statement, I am not for a point of sale or a title transfer. I call that the fifty-year plan. Some of our houses never get changed over, so I think inspection is the proper problem. What that looks like, I'm, I'm open to discussion.
Okay, so.
I think Tom.
I think that.
I'm not trying to advocate, I'm just trying to, I, I just.
What's the direction?
I just looking for direction because they're gonna look at me and ask. So what's your board thinking? Unless you're gonna give them some directive or.
Well, I, I was, this, this is what I was gonna give to, to Tom to noodle over to say, okay. Can this ordinance say, we need to have, you know, can it be structured so we have. In the ordinance perspective, we can do this investigative piece first and then we can take a look at, you know, bringing septic tanks up to some minimum standard. And then can we also include in this ordinance domestic well status? Can we get that information added and they're all in one combining? Um, and then the remediation piece would be. How you go about doing it, to what level? But this is more of a, of a. Of a structure for the whole ordinance, if this is even. Would even be acceptable. Or does the ordinance have to be specifically when you need a new septic tank? This is the way it's gotta be done, you know, you know, much more defined. Or can it be a little broader to say, this is our direction, this is the township's direction toward. The health of. And, and the process, the process that's involved is you gotta get your place inspected and then you need to, if it needs to be. Fixed, then there's a remediation piece of it that you gotta go through and.
My, my concern is that if you found a problem. And the state statute says it's. This is the minimum that you gotta do.
Yeah.
Because it's kind of what I was reading from what Lions inspections, they had certain ones that were just a non-compliance, but they're uh. The uh. Uh, there were other ones that they said they needed, we should've had some other enhancements, but they didn't. So I'm just saying, maybe we um. I, 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 I'm just concerned about that. I don't wanna, I don't wanna have that ordinance out there and then come back after you've told somebody. Something and then come back and say, well, we really want. Something more than that.
Is that what you meant by tier?
Yeah.
Compliance, see.
Well, I'm just saying that if you're, if you're within the la, uh, so many feet of the lake. Um. There may be an enhancement to that septic. System that would be beneficial for the lake, that maybe if you're a mile up lake, it's not necessary. I, I don't know.
The effect is different.
You know, the other thing too is maybe this is, this whole thing right here is a little premature and the road, and the health of the. Planning Commission getting involved in a septic ordinance right now is premature. We may wanna wait till we get uh. These committees established and let them meet and talk about it this little bit and come up with, you know, collective ideas about what direction this ought to go and. Provide you, and instead of. Doing what I've just proposed here and then telling this committee, well, this is what you got to work with. Maybe it should be the other way around.
And I think you might be right.
You know, just leave it for.
Well, the, when I got in in April, they, he asked what priorities might be and of course, as I stated before, Jim. And, and other meetings with um, Land Conservancy or whatever is. That we. Um. We, it takes, it's a protracted event here governmentally to get an ordinance in place. And I, I think, and I asked Tom, that while they were dealing with multitudes of s- storage. Places, uh, units and all of those site plans and everything else, that when you had moments that septic is going to be. Uh, a, a forerunner here that has to get addressed because of the recent activity of. You know, essentially, um, you know, with, with no, no continued glue operation towards a sewer. That we will need something to address what I call two to five percent of the people that simply aren't gonna do what you ask them to do anyways. And so it, it's synonymous, I think, and I think. That Jim, as, as the group works, it can feed information to the planning commission. While they're working on that whole uh, septic piece to begin with. And I, I'm not for tabling at the planning commissioning a sewer, uh, or excuse me, a septic ordinance by any, any means because. That's part of this uh, moving forward. And so I'd like to see a, you know, kind of a dual track thing going on with our planning commission. And with a free exchange of, of information, um, ultimately knowing that the process has to come back up. To the board level uh, for reviews. Um, and so I, I just think it needs to be continuing on that track. So they're putting that formality that needs in those ordinances before we reveal them. And if they can take data and take information and fit it in, look, and this is not the township's first crack at trying to look at septic ordinance.
Well, I guess, you know.
To, to table them, not for it all.
And your thoughts, Jim? On, I know right now you're talking for voluntary inspector.
Yeah, but if we ever did do a, let's say, mandatory inspections. Would it be more likely that those would be around the lake or would they just be across the township?
Township, I believe it's township-wide.
It needs to be township-wide.
Unless in the future, the political climate uh, gets better, we can get on San Pans somewhere, but.
I'm just asking.
We, we're here to, we're here to take care of uh, uh, Garris Township, which we share.
Makes sense.
And I, 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 I'm not, I don't, I just wanna continue to move in a positive forward action. Ladies, we haven't heard from your side of the table. I know, I know we do a lot of discussion of it, you know, over here, but um, the, the, I just think it ought to continue moving in that planning commission. And you know, Jim, as the Health of Higgins Lake uh, committees and subcommittees start to. You know, I just think there has to be a free exchange of information.
Well, maybe what I'm, maybe what I'm more looking for is this, this couple of pages here, if you don't see any red flags in this, the collective league, then. This is kind of the framework that I'd use to get to the subcommittee on septic ordinance.
Yep.
They would then in turn, and, and at the same time, I'll give it to Tom and he can, he can be thinking about it.
Yep.
And he will get in, continue to get input from the septic committee and from us and from the board and is the development of this thing, but it's. It's kind of, you know, very first level of different things to think about. I had a great meeting with. With uh. At one of the septic inspectors. Last week and about some ideas on the island, which I think really deserves some uh. Some real consideration is about how that might be a. Something to fix part of the problems that are out there and we're gathering up some more information on that, but um. There's, that, that's a real, geez, what are we gonna do about that island and, and um. I think there's some pretty good ideas coming, so I hope so. Anyway, it's for information and um, once we get the, the septic subcommittee kicked off and get this in front of them and let them. Let them be thinking it over and see if we're on what seems to be the right track, so.
Do we have numbers? I'm not looking for names um, of where the applicant status.
Yeah, I got it coming up here in just a second. Oh, maybe.
Total numbers. And on the press release thing, I know Jim, you and I have talked about uh, uh, the need, if you will. I think to get a clarification in the press release um, out there about what indeed we are looking to do. Um. I, I have felt pressure, um, obviously that, you know. So you reorganize this Health of Higgins Lake because you're gonna immediately do another authority and all the rest of that, and that couldn't be the furthest from the truth. And I think the quicker we get a press release out there, where we talk for ourselves and not let social media talk for us. Uh, I think that's important and.
Well, there's a draft, there's a draft of one here. Um, I have talked with some of the. Onto that, um, I've talked to some of the people about, some of the people, some of the. Principles of the, of the bigger, you know, um, organizations out there and, and. Everybody says that they, they support what we're doing and I'm sending this off to them if this is. Close, then I'm gonna send this off to them and say, this is what I'd, I'd like to put in a paper and wondered if you're interested in. And signing off on this and agreeing that uh, they support this, things like the H L F. The Conservancy and, and the Higgins Lake United, you know, all of those. Yep, we all buy into this, then I think we're, you know, we're getting the support of a lot of people.
How, how's the whole board feel about that? Um, about my press release? I mean, that's a conversation I know Jim and I have had. In my office anyways, uh, about notifying, this is a notification to the public of what our intent is. And not let other people tell us apparently what they think our narrative is.
Well, I think that's a tier head, they're right on the head because if you leave it to the bozos out there that are putting the crap that's on Facebook. That's just trash and it's not accurate, it's better than, than uh. Uh, I think we need to put, be out front and I think we need to have uh, continued uh, updates as to where we're at. And uh, so that, that if you wanna dispute what we said, that's fine, but you're not gonna make it up on your own.
I think that's, I think it's a good idea, transparency.
Yeah. The, I hate the word trash.
Oh, yes, okay.
It's the most overused.
Uh, but at the end of the day, um, I guess what I'm looking for is kind of a consensus, cause Jim is working really hard behind the scenes. Um, I've. And, and uh, on, on these pieces, we try and get it to all come together. And I, I think we, I, my personal, and Jim and I have talked, it, it, it's time to get some of the organizations back to the table. In a, in a common sense format, see if we can get an agreement on a press release here and uh, let's get. It's time for people to take down the shields, if you will, worried about some jury-mandated solution. And uh, and, uh, and, and move forward in a positive fashion, so.
This is pretty um.
It's good. I like it.
It's, it, you know, there's not a lot of. I mean, it just tells us where we are and what we're doing, where we're headed and it, but it doesn't have anything controversial in it and, and it just says that. You know, it gives people an opportunity to buy into, yeah, we, we like the way this is going and. So, read it over if you think there, if you see something in it that you really don't like, I got, you know, just email me back or whatever.
Your phone number needs attention down here.
Oh, yeah?
Yes, you got a five-digit there, it's a.
Oh, yeah, just try dialing.
You may wanna correct that. That's, that, that, that's an opening grabber, but.
Yep.
Um, but uh, so the, here's the question, cause you know, we only get so much time together as a board. Uh, the, every, is everybody in concurrence and that we, that Jim can operationally start to move? Like with a document like this and go, we'll go out, solicit the report, uh, the support of those organizations and at the proper time that we have everything. Um, we can then go ahead and make that press release.
I, I, I am, uh, only because I've been asked a lot of times, so what's going on with the sewers? Is it dead? Everything's dead, right? Cause the paper, you know, on the front page. Irish, you know, dissolved glue. Um, that people think it's dead. It's not dead. Don't get that in your head.
Well, the Health of Higgins Lake is not dead. The, the, the current Public Act two thirty-three with the sewer is dead at this point. With the dissolution of glue.
Right, yes.
Um, so it's, it's.
Possibility of sewers.
The, yeah, exactly. And until we're, we're committed to getting the data that we need to determine what is the best moving forward here. Um, yeah, that's where I'm at. Uh, is, is that what you meant or, okay?
Yeah, and, and as far as the, you know, footage, uh, you know, like lakefront footage, how far your septic is from. It was, there's so much research been done on all this. I would think somewhere that there would be a, um. Argument of what, if anything, what that would. Look like, right?
Yeah, that's part of what this, you know, this science committee, we've got the applications from people that have got, that really know something about this and I don't. So I would, we gotta get some people bought into it and. And feedback from, you know, the people that really know what the answers are and then we can help to all move all these forward. All I can do is facilitate. You know, getting this stuff out there and soliciting the information, getting it back and then, you know, going with it. I, I don't pretend to have the. You know, what, where, you know, if it's.
You're not an expert?
Don't ask the questions, we don't have anybody finding the answer.
So anyway, um. Mostly this is for you to just look over if you've got any questions, you know, give me a holler and I'm gonna just keep moving with it. Um, next.
But don't let it set for long, folks. Uh, Jim's out there working every day hard on this. He is, and I know I'm answering lots of questions and I'm. You know, trying to get, trying to get with these other uh, organizations.
We should try to get it.
Back together.
We haven't had much trouble getting on the front page lately, so.
Say, I'm being absolutely serious. Uh, I have a relationship with her. I'll do my best. Yeah, and, and seriously, I, sure, I said I would reach out to her and try to get it front page.
Well, frankly, where I'm at right now is um, then. Is this getting uh, some communication back from these folks to get by and uh, so I can have that, those last outlines on there for. You know, support, which I.
And then we're okay for Jim just contacting and let's move this thing forward. I just, I don't wanna get it bogged down in the process of government sixty to ninety days to run a letter to have something published here. We need to make some statements. Um, you know, we've listened to all of the parties for so many uh, years, uh, and also. We've listened to our constituent township in Lion, um, telling us, you know, that, what their thought processes are and we really haven't said. Other than we're forming this committee and uh, and I, I'd like to reassure our community that, that we're. This is not a backup plug-in-and-go again. This is a backup in a sincere effort to find out the data.
Yeah, a lot of people have got a lot of really good information and. You know, it's sort of sitting down there below the surface and I'm trying to get all that information from all these other groups. Into, you know, one place where they can funnel it and we can, from that, make a collective decision about. About where we're going.
So how many total apps do you have so far? Not, not committee by committee or anything else, just. Since we announced.
Yeah.
Cause I'm kind of have a little problem in my mind if we don't have very many. I know that I witnessed lots of folks who've had opinions and um.
There's thirteen people have applications in, I know of a couple more that are coming, fourteen, fifteen.
Fantastic.
Some of these, a lot of these are. Are science oriented. Others are, there's a couple others that are. Communications and P R type, you know, folks, which is great. And um. And a couple that are in the works are steering committee types. So I think we're coming. So I think we're coming. And by the way, that's um, you know, right now, we, we, I think it was on the twelfth, we kicked this off for thirty days.
Yeah.
So we got another week or so. Um, I'm gonna be on vacation until, say, the middle of April, starting in another couple of weeks. So I say leave them open and we're not gonna do anything till I get back.
Yeah, we did a minimum now, minimum of thirty days. And uh, yeah, I think that'd be appropriate.
People are asking, you know, if they're calling your office, then Michelle, that, you know, yeah, we got time, we're gonna keep it out there.
Absolutely.
As you know, as you talk to people or, let them know, you know, I'm getting application. There's lots of, there's lots of work to be done, so. The road, the road commission is just, I won't spend any time on this. I've got a couple of reports from the road commission, one from, these are for the road ends at the, at the lake. From ninety-three and again from two thousand ten, they updated their, they put this information together and it's got um, it's got, piece of paper that I must not have printed and given to you thoroughly. Oh yeah, I did too. It's these four pages here that are.
Yeah, and they're back. Yep.
All those graphs wrote in.
No, yeah, the uh, in the gray and green columns. The one was from the nineteen ninety-three in the gray, that was the, the condition of these roads. And if you look at the, the rating, that these roads got, I don't know how much time to spend on this, but there's a lot of information that the road commission did, I guess. Maybe one of the most interesting things, if you look at the bottom of the second page, um, the tonnage of, sand or runoff that was going into the lake in nineteen ninety-three was, five hundred tons of dirt washed into the lake in nineteen ninety-three. The road commission recognized it as a problem, started to deal with it on a, you know, on a, either in conjunction with us and Lyon or, on their own. And over the next um, ninety-three, over the next fifteen years, they turned that five hundred and seven into half of that, which is, which is a good thing.
Yeah.
But that's been fifteen years ago.
Yep.
And um, now if you take this information and kind of see the trends, which ones were, some of them are, are not getting better, they're getting worse. So those should end up on the top of the list that we would like to see them take a look at. Where, where there's a decrease, where it says increase, that went from, the increase in the way right hand column, that went from um, thirty-two tons a year to nineteen tons a year. That means their rating is increasing.
Yep.
The ones you wanna look at are the ones that are decreasing, that went from twenty-six tons on Saint Lawrence to sixteen tons. Sure, that doesn't work either, does it?
Good data. First time I've ever seen it.
Well, it's coming from a bunch of different spots where I went through and, you know, gathered and retyped it and put it in where you could, you could see, where this was. So from this, um, uh, this is something that we would also hand over to the, well, the subcommittee to take a further look at this and say, these are the, maybe the ten sites that we really should take a better look at because they're doing the worst. And then probably gonna have to come back here and say, can you carve some money out for the road commission to go do this? And get Roger here and say, Roger, what can you kick in and, you know, and, and put together a plan for that. What else is on here? Database, this is a kind of a gee whiz one, but it's pretty cool. I think this, this other. Sheet, um, I went to uh, I gather, I got to the assessor and got a couple of reports. Um, for this is, the data now includes this information for both Lyon and Garrish, townships all the way around the lake. And from that, the parcel number, we can obviously see who, a name and an address, um, for mailer. There's more information than, than what shows on here, but I just kinda carved it back down. Um, we can do mailers, but um, you can identify whether it's a lakefront property. Uh, cause I went around and checked everyone that was on the lake.
Is that list like new pro, new, new builds? Is that what that list is?
This list?
Yeah.
This, this is the, this is the first twenty-five of eight thousand.
Okay.
This is everybody.
It's not a summary.
No, 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 no. Sorry, that's, yeah, this is a, this is just, I printed the first twenty-five lines of. Um, but you, you can identify, you can search for it, easily search to see, lakefront properties, whether they're homesteaded properties, um, the section that they're in and the section means whether it's a section, one of Garrish Township or whether it's in, in also, which it didn't show on here, but, section also refers to the subdivision that it's in. There's a whole list of them. There must be, hundred and fifty lines of subdivisions or partial subdivisions where a, a, a parcel number lands in a block of Michigan Central Park, that's a subdivision number. So, with that information, you can sort it out and get down to the real. And additionally, what I just got in your, in the last day or so was this, whether the, the class that they are, whether they're, residential improved or residential vacant is the two biggest ones, but commercial, agricultural, industrial, um, governmental, you know, those are all classifications for this property that you can, you can go through and sort and you can get a pretty good idea if you wanna, show me all of the, all of the lakefront properties and Garrish Townships that are homesteaded, um, that are vacant. That'd be kinda interesting. How come it's homesteaded and vacant? But there's a couple out there like that and there's some reason for it. But it's, it's, it's pretty, so if you've got a question about, geez, I wonder what that's all about, either let me know or I'll just get you this and you can sort through it on your own. And um, but the biggest thing from this was so that I could, back to the sewer, the septic ordinance, was that when we start and we find it in, in uh, the, the health department doesn't know anything about twenty properties in section one, then we can send a mailer off to those twenty properties, at the drop of a hat. From here, we can do a mail merge with this information and send that out. That was the, the real gist of why I got started, so. So that's what that is. And then what else did I have? Steering committee candidates, we talked about them a little bit. We got good candidates. Got some very, very good people that have, that have signed up that wanna be, that wanna be involved. What do I have to do? What, how can I help?
Do, do we have from the currents that might be there? Um, if you looked at it, or you might not have looked at them totally enough, but are, are we starting to get, what I call a cross-section of, of the community, um, meaning that, um, you know, I mean, obviously we have several of the organizations and groups. Um, are we getting some cross-representative type of thing there?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah, I think we are, um, from, if you, if you take it by the, you know, the, the big organizations, there's people from all those different organizations. Yeah, they're probably a little lean, a little heavier to some, but, but there's, there's people becoming involved in all of it. Um, most have, not most, but a lot of people are, have a real interest in, in close to the lake. Um, not as many from out as I'd like to see, but what I, we are talking, hopefully we're gonna, get some people from back off the lake a little bit that have a good community township perspective that, you know, that are, that's kinda where the steering committee people, I, I think uh, looking for people that are good strategic thinkers, project management skills, um, you know, leaders that can, that can, work with these various subcommittees and keep them on the right direction. That's what I'm hoping for. There's two of them in there, but uh, we're still looking for some more there, so.
Thanks, thanks for the effort so much. Bergman?
Uh, yes. I guess it's not a secret anymore.
I wa, I would like to have it out there.
Okay.
So.
You want me to? Yeah, Jim and I met, or Jim, Jim set up a meeting with uh, Bergman, go ahead, Jimmy, let's craft this stuff.
Yeah. Once we acknowledge that we were in the dissolution process, we felt it was appropriate that now Garrish Township can talk to Bergman's office. Um, and, and clarify. We had never, we didn't do any of that prior to.
Well, dur, during, yeah, during the, during the process of the glue trying to, figure out what they were doing and us as a township, we did not, you're right. We stayed out of it. We did not jury-mander glue as board. We, we just let them try to do what, they needed to do or the right thing. Uh, once it became evident that uh, glue was on its way to being dissolved, um, there was a lot of rhetoric about who was gonna get this grant and how it was gonna be spent and everybody was arguing over money that wasn't even, even here. Um, so we set up a meeting with Jack Bergman. Uh, it was Jim and I attended uh, with uh, Kim Morley representing the county and, and also being our sort of liaison to get us into the door. And um, so we had a nice conversation with him for about twenty minutes. He's aware of what's going on. He, his office has been getting calls from the other side of the lake regarding the grant. And um, he made it with the, as you put, no uncertain terms, knowing that glue is gonna be dissolved, that that grant was going back to appropriations. It was gonna get pulled. He didn't blink an eye. He just flat out said, that's what's gonna happen. There's no repurposing, there's no changing it. If, if, if the project's done, so is the grant. And we thanked him first time and asked him not to forget us the next time we, we wanted to apply for a grant and, it was a cordial meeting and that was the end of it.
It's not one of those meetings where you go, where he states it and then you go, well, yeah, but what about?
Yeah.
That wasn't the, there was no question about what uh, what his position was on it, so.
And as the primary sponsor.
So rather, rather than running up the chain, we're trying to, we just went right to the, the head and, and that's what he said. And I respect his opinion, you know, what he did and uh, and of course, he also pointed out, the current environment in Washington DC is way different than it was of last year. He said, you just, everything's scrutinized. He says, I, there's no way this is gonna, you know, so.
A year ago might have been different, maybe. I, I don't think so.
I don't think so either.
Today, it's like, you know.
Yeah. So I, as far as I'm concerned, it's to rest if, 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 I would, I would hope that I know glue is meeting here soon, that, that they do the right thing and Lyon does the right thing and, they dissolve it and we can move on in our respective endeavors.
Thank you both for, for, for the work on that, that piece of uh, getting definitive answers, um, rather than going up the bottom, if you will, there. So I appreciate that. Uh, I think it was timely, it was the right thing to do at the right time. And uh, so I think, again, moving on to the, the health Higgins Lake, that's where we're going to be. That's where we're going to put our efforts. I think our planning commission, the same way in the septic. And uh, and continue. And I think we have, it's up and coming upon all of our board members to, we're, we are in relationship uh, rebuilding, uh, stage at this point, uh, with folks. We, there's trust and rapport that has to be redeveloped in our community and it needs to be done in good faith. And we need to reach across, as I say, reach across the aisles uh, to everybody. Uh, and, and uh, but I most importantly, I wanna reassure folks that, you know, that's where we're at. Um, it's, 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 status of the project is, there is no status any longer, but moving forward, so. Jim, thank you for the update on that.
I think I mentioned that I was, I'm gonna be gone. So, yeah, I did, so.
When are you leaving?
Uh, the twenty seventh or something like that.
So you'll be here for the meeting, the annual meeting.
Yeah. But I'll miss the next two meetings, the, the next work session and the next um, regular meeting, April's meeting, so.
You, so what's the dates then? So you're gone the twenty-seventh of what?
March.
March to.
About April fifteenth.
For a trip of a lifetime.
Yes, yes. Much, in a much deserved uh, rest for. Certainly the effort. All right, moving on to the next, uh, Michelle, uh, our seasonal employees and the uh, I, I listened to the seasonal employees part-time discussion, ESTA, which is the Earn Six Time Act and uh, and, and the, current state of that discussion, so. Floor is yours.
Um, I have watched way too many ESTAs with ours. Um, I think there's just a few things that we need to do to our policy that we already have in place, um, to incorporate the ESTA piece and in regards to our full-time people, um, from what I understand, um, I think all we'll need to do is, when a, an employee has to ask for it to be ESTA time, when they are requesting time off. And we already give more than enough time, um, to cover what is required.
For the full-time.
For our full-time people. Um, so my suggestion would be that we just track, uh, because they have to ask for it to be ESTA time, is that we just track it as such, as individuals, for the full-time people. Um, we also have to establish, so this is where it gets a little confusing.
Part-time, it's part-time.
Okay, I'm still on full-time people. So full-time people, the tracking will be different than the part-time people because right now the full-time people are tracked via their calendar, their calendar year, meaning their date of hire.
Nope.
No.
Their anniversary.
Anniversary. Thank you. Their anniversary. Just there.
Their anniversary, full-time is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Which is their date of hire. Same thing. No, you're right. Okay. So you can't do that with a part-time person. There's just too much track that way. We're gonna keep it the same for the full-time piece. The part-time piece, we're gonna establish, it to be the calendar year that we follow for the, for their pays. Meaning.
That makes sense.
January to December, cause it's easier to track. We're also going to follow the, um, accrual earned and not front load.
Yep.
Um.
Just a second though, on your, on our policy for the full timer, we are, we are front-loading, are we not?
No.
No. Those are earned.
Earned.
Okay. There's two positions are front-loaded. It's the police chief and the fire chief.
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So those are salaried pieces and under a different.
Yeah, got you.
Yep. Um, so the part-time, the part-time, the seasonal, all that will be, uh, like I said, from January to December. As a new employee, we're going to have to put into our policy that, um, that they will have to wait up to a hundred and twenty days to use any accrued time. Um, the reason behind that is that from a seasonal standpoint, if you don't, it's gonna cause some issues in regards to, um, as soon as they earn it, you know, you're gonna have people wanting it, cause you're, what you're gonna do is you're gonna allow to, uh, if we allow them to take and use them in one hour increments, they're gonna earn one hour after thirty, every thirty hours they work. So, if you don't do that, you're gonna have people right after they start earning, you know, an hour to, wanting to take it off. So at least by doing the hundred and twenty days, your seasonal people are rehired every year. Or I'm sorry, every season, you know, rehired. So as long as they change it from six months in between to two months, so as long as they are, off that amount of time.
There's no period.
There's no carryover and it requires them a hundred and twenty days. So it's at least taking them until end of July, August before they can use anything. Makes sense.
It also means that the tail end of the season, you're gonna potentially have a compounded problem. Everybody taking time.
I don't know what else to do though. No, there, I don't know any other way.
If you do the one twenty, it protects you for the July force. And in those holidays, obviously, with the exception of Labor Day.
Can't get paid time off, they could take.
Yeah.
Right. And the thing is, is it's still ESTA rules. It still has to fall under, for them to use those hours, it still falls under the ESTA reasoning. And they do have to ask, the employee has to ask to use it under that.
Well, if they have to ask to use, they have to, have to ask to use it for sure. Um, why can't it just be managed? That, uh, you know, yeah, you got an hour coming, but you can't take the day, we don't, they don't get authorized the time off. That, uh, you know, yeah, you got an hour coming, but you can't take the day, we don't, they don't get authorized the time off. I mean, their supervisors are going to talk.
You read the. It's, it's pretty stringent and it's like, you can, it's, it's so wide open.
Boy, this is just.
And then it's like, we, we also have the responsibility of informing every employee. Like what they can do to retaliate against us if we don't, if they feel like they were, you know, should not. So it's, it's a whole.
With, with that, what it has exposed. Is the seasonal practice that has been done here forever, which is everybody just. Nobody ever says anything and people show back up and, and then you figure out what you have to do. We have to get our seasonal employees and, uh, uh, leave back in here. Assign a proper document that they're seasonal, April fifteenth, October fifteenth. And then we have to also do the notice to the worker of reasonable assurance of work for the following season. If their performance was where you would expect it, so that they have some reasonable. Fortunately, the state of Michigan's been doing this for years, uh, and there are forms for that. So that would, that gets you to your April fifteenth, October fifteenth, and each year they come in and, and have to do this. So that's going to require a change of what I call practice in this area.
So the attorney.
I think that's a good.
Attorney did the, uh. The program that you watched, set recommended a hundred and twenty days.
Yeah, they changed it from ninety to a hundred and twenty. And they also, um.
So that's outside the Estes, they, they recommended that or, so that's not statutory language of one twenty or ninety? Is it?
I didn't read it in there, so I think it must be.
You know what, I was wrong. I, I was able to print both of those off. But you asked if, at the beginning of that, they had the slides. They did, I just.
Yeah, but I'm just, I just, the law, Estes law, I guess, I don't recall it saying. You can put a delay on there.
Oh, yeah.
It does say.
I don't know if it's so good in the Estes law, but I've watched four things every time they have said.
Employers may have a policy for new employees hired on or after February twenty first. Twenty first, twenty twenty-five, requiring these employees to wait up to one hundred and twenty days before using approved sick leave.
So new employee, if the second year round, if they're seasonal, they're still an employee.
They get rehired every year.
Okay.
That's, that's the. That's the key to doing this part right, because you're a seasonal employee, you're separated from employment for six months. So you're, you know, that's where it was really going to be hard if.
You're saving yourself maybe from July fourth weekend, but not Labor.
Not Labor Day, right, that's all.
No, and, and again.
Well, and you also. Uh, unused sick leave carries over. For the next year, year leave. However. The statute, I think, is clear around the fact you may only use seventy-two in a given leave.
That's for full-time employees. That's for full-time employees.
Six months, it's a.
Now it's two months.
Okay, so it, the block starts over.
It, it doesn't carry over and you're coming back as a new employee.
Yeah.
So that's, that's for this paperwork.
Well, one six, I don't know, maybe the.
Changing.
Remember, the, yeah, the day they put this law into place, they were still changing.
They need amendments on the day they did it.
Um, so that's why we're going to implement all of this. We've got a letter put together. I talked to Russ, um, a couple of times this week. And, um.
Employees are going to have to come in here and sign those seasonal pieces.
So basically, all you need from the board then is authorization to draft the language. So we can put it in a resolution to change the personnel policy.
Well, we can actually.
I don't know.
You can get rid of section, in the section of our personnel policy, you can get rid of, it's called Paid Medical Leave Act, PMLA of twenty eighteen. You can get rid of that whole section and you can replace it with a new policy that follows Estes guidance.
Exactly.
And so.
Uh, we'd have to make a discretionary decision on.
On the one twenty.
On a hundred and twenty.
I did, I've been reaching out to see if anybody's got policy language. I did, uh, I did get one from the, the Dow, uh, Bay Area and she put it in the packet.
Yeah.
Um, for you to review and what this might, and I, looking it over, it looks like it might address everything, but you want. Twenty, this addresses a ninety in this one. Um, but it addresses everything from eligibility reasons for the leave and the definition of your family and whatever. Because if you pull out your PMLA right now, PMLA has those definitions. But as my advice, the thought process was take the PMLA out. We rescind, rescind that policy, pull it out of our board, replace it with something similar to what you see here.
Uh, in, in this particular one here, which has, um, guideline, if you will. Uh, and it also has, uh, a employee acknowledgement of the earned paid sick leave policy. Um, and, um, I think it covers what we want to say. Uh, uh, other than that one twenty was what my review of it did. We did, I mean, Michelle and I, um. I did draft the new seasonal work agreement, which I got from other places that have seasonal employment. And that these people aren't assigned, um, at their, to do the April fifteen to the October. And then Michelle, in your packet here, also grabbed that notice to worker of reasonable assurance of work from the state of Michigan. Uh, and it's a notice that you are a seasonal worker, if you will.
You know, great time, because I assume that each person comes in, you're filling out a new W four.
Yeah.
You have like an employee package.
Just the few things of what you will. Yep, yep.
It's that, that piece is, by opinion, would be long overdue regardless of us.
Yeah.
Yeah. Uh, there's, there's ever, so far I see a sense of entitlement, but because I was there last year, I'm going to be there next year. Um, and, and it doesn't take into, uh, any play whether or not they were good employee, weren't, whether you want to hire them back or whether you would. So it, it, it gives you a process, not to mean that that's what it's intending for us to do right now, but this is a good reset.
Well, I was asked why.
To do.
Why are we doing?
Well, the why is.
And I said, well, it's because of the Estes.
It is because of us, but it's also. And it's a business. And, and as you know, we've all been doing those things, so.
So I, Michelle, what I'm hearing is the packet concept is great.
Yep.
The only thing that I think we'll need to do, and again. They gave you a thirty day on this anyways, and I'm not sure whether or not it'll get revisited. I've reached out to Borton's office about some things. I don't know whether they're, this was an eleventh hour compromise and whether, where we're at. I think our policy, please review that one that we gave you and comment whatever. And we can revisit that at an April or a May board meeting to do what we need to do for the manual.
Yeah.
It's more important that the clerk's office is clear on the operational piece. So the real question is, is are you all looking at, you know, the one twenty seem to be good for you or the ninety?
In, in the meantime, I am going to go ahead and move forward with getting the letters out to the seasonal workers because I have to, because it's.
Well, that's operational.
They, yeah, they have to, um. Reply back, so he knows whether or not who's coming back and who's not.
Yeah, she needs to be able to move forward, uh, going forward.
We've already started tracking and, you know, there is only one thing and Christie isn't here, um. The one thing, granted, is though, one thing we haven't clarified is the. Okay, 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 help me. It's not paid on, it's paid on call and paid by call. So they're paid on call is something that they're paid to stay home. Yeah.
So. They're still a part-time employee at that point. You're, you're regularly paying and employing them, right? You're scheduling them? But you're scheduling them, they have to stay home.
Yeah.
So then they are a part-time scheduled individual. Yes, no?
Yeah, but you're just paying them a stipend, right?
Right, they don't actually.
They're not ten ninety-nine.
No, but the point is, yeah, the point is you're not getting paid for a full hour.
Or a full wage.
Yeah, so you'd have to make equivalents.
Yeah.
And you'd figure it.
Yeah.
We didn't.
Yeah.
And you can't get clarification from anybody who should know a darn thing.
Nobody thought through that.
Right.
So I guess what I'm saying to you is, is I, I, we have to do a policy correction. And so that, that I, I think we can do in April or May, after we've all had a chance to look this over. But operationally speaking, I think she needs, uh, would it be our intent in that policy to put one twenty or ninety? And I think at that point, I think you might have something she could work with operationally in her office. And then if we wish her to do that, we probably should have a motion to use that as a defining factor of ninety days or one twenty. Before the policy.
I think April would be fine, though.
Yeah, I think true. Get some thought to it, folks. It's, uh, it's pretty complex, um. Okay, anything else on that, Michelle? That you need clarification, feel like you can move forward in your life?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, that also is the, um. Posting of positions at the same time for the Marina and the Garrish Township Park seasonal position. We have one park attendant down there, um, and if we're going to be, uh, technically posting. The positions by having these people come back in, I don't see where you would treat that one any different. Um, you?
Uh, here's what I don't, I, I'm not. Not clear on. What the Marina needs.
Well, they have, actually, usually.
That's not right, because I know we did for sure those ones, so.
Okay, so past practice has been, oh, yeah, we found out so-and-so college student B isn't coming back. And so now we need to post.
Yeah.
To replace those people. So I, yeah, I, I'm thinking that when you do this, we need the quick posting and they're. So when they come back in here and they're saying, yes, I'm giving you, you know, I want to, I'm going to reapply for this basically. Uh, and, but yet without filling that application out, but yet they have to fill the Estes stuff out. And then if it, you know, that is a posting, uh, when it comes back in. So we need just a quick posting of the job description, which you have. And then also the one for the Garrish Township Park as well, because why would you do one and not the other?
Right.
Logically, right?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay, so is everybody on board with that, that concept? Okay. Uh, and then lastly, are we done with that?
Yeah.
Got everything you need?
Yep.
Okay, uh, now lastly is, is, uh, we do need to set, set a special meeting. Uh, and of course, for March nineteenth. Believe it is. I think I sent you guys an email that we need to consider this.
I may have already put it on my calendar.
Hmm, you might have put it on yours. We didn't put it on everybody's, so that's what the purpose of this is. March nineteenth is a Wednesday. Um, it coincides with what our council can, uh, come to the meeting. Special meeting there. Uh, for to, he can get briefed to all the township, uh, board members on legal matters that are before. Um, the township, one of those legal, um, one of those. Points of discussion that you will hear in there is, you, you had directed me at the last. Uh, with the last resolution to seek advice from our council on further, uh, what we further need to do on the dissolution of glue off. And so in the Scott, Jim and I went as directed by the board and, uh, and, um. Scott told us what needs to be done and there is some more, another resolution or something we would have to do. Scott said that he could come to the nineteenth meeting, uh, give it to us. You guys can question him on anything you need with that resolution. Uh, you could never make any motion to pass anything through in a closed session, but we can come out of that. And then give our township attorney further direction on that topic or any other legal matter in which we might. Need to move forward on. So that's what my proposal is, March nineteenth, and it was at nine in the morning.
Yep.
I believe it was.
Are you going to send an invitation or?
I will, yeah, once we.
Okay.
Confirm it. It's confirmed with, uh, with the township attorney for that, we're shooting for that date.
Do you know about how long that would take, like more than an hour?
Yeah.
No idea.
Depends on how many questions you got, there you go.
Right.
It could be very short, if the board members are in tune and they agree with the legal, uh, advice of our council. Or whether you're sending them back to the drawing board or something, but I wouldn't think it would be anymore. And then probably forty minutes at best, but that's my thoughts. Jim, you, you agree?
I would agree. I can't imagine, you know, so.
So, um, I will, I will get that out to everybody and then we'll get it out properly, publicized and whatever, uh, that we, that is necessary. Part of the reason why we're doing the nineteenth is, is folks, we got three meetings on the eleventh, six and six thirty and seven o'clock and an annual meeting. And so I just would prefer that we have a special meeting to address, you know, those, those issues. And their legal matters at that time. Y'all good with that?
Yep.
All right, very good. Uh, is there any public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Come on up.
Come on up, state your name into the microphone.
We know who you are.
Get a good snooze for the last couple of hours.
Sorry. Well, I've been very attentive, thank you. Um, so this is for you, chief. Um, I am a retired high school principal. Downstate in Flushing and I can't speak highly enough of the SRO program. It is, it's, it's, it's a huge game changer for kids. And, um, so I really applaud Garrish and the Roscommon Schools for putting together that. Unfortunately, those come about because tragedy happens and, uh, then, then we see the need for it. But I really, um, can't emphasize the importance of that too. And the SRO is really a, uh, integral part of the whole school system. Uh, at Flushing High School where I was principal there, uh, we also had a canine officer, um, with our SORO program, program. It was amazing to see the kids with the dog. It was like the dog was their therapist. And they would just, you know, open up to this dog where, you know, didn't have to be a human face type thing. So it was, it, it was a wonderful program, so. You know, let's hope that the money continues to go for something like that. Um, regarding the septic ordinance, um, I think one of the things that we found in the short period of time in Lion. Um, was there is a conflict of interest between the inspector and the hauler. In, in Lion's septic ordinance, they, um, said that the inspector could also be the hauler. And the hauler, the, you know, hauling the, um. Junk away. Um, whereas I think that, and, and in some ways, I don't understand how that can be a conflict of interest. Because the hauler is still getting the money from hauling the, you know, emptying out the septic system. But it did prove to be a problem and I would encourage you to look into separating those two things. Separating the inspector from the hauler. Um, and then, um, continuing with HOHL, the Health of Higgins Lake. Jim, thank you so much for everything that you are doing on that. And, um, perhaps something in the paper, and I wouldn't, I wouldn't be opposed to writing a letter to the editor. Too, if you'd like, but, um, something out in the paper to encourage people that aren't just gen, aren't just Garrish Township. Um, residents, you know, to, and they don't even have to be full-time residents. They, you know, can be interested people. So, um, if you want me to or, or else get ahold of, um. And her name escapes me right now, who does all the articles? Cheryl, thank you. Um, you know, encourage her to write something to encourage people to apply for it, so that's all I have, but thanks so much for everything that you're doing.
Thank you.
Hey folks, it's been a long one again, eleven thirty-five, um. I, does anybody else have any comments that we stay here longer?
No, thank you.
Can we? Can we?
No, thank you.
Listen, I, I'm. I'm here, I'm here all day.
I have a council recital, so.
I'm frozen. I'm frozen.
All right, we're good. Take a motion to adjourn then, please.
Please. I make it.
All right, I'm back. I'm wired seconded by, uh, Jim Anderson, uh, Professor Anderson. Any discussion? All those favorites, saying aye.
Aye.
Pose the same motion, very, thank you, eleven thirty-five.